Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Place Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Excellent, and may we move on to public forum? If people are interested in addressing topics not in the agenda, this is your time period to discuss. You have three minutes, and if you need to figure out how to raise your hands, there's the participants portion in your screen. You click on that, and then there's over on the right-hand bottom is raise hand.
Thank you, we do have a couple raised hands. First will be Kristalyn. Kristalyn, go ahead.
Hello, wonderful council. I just wanted to give an update that the Chamber of Commerce is working on candidate forums. So, the first week of October, we will have a Half Moon Bay candidate forum. And then the second week of October, we will have a mid-coast and harbor candidate forums. We're going to be working with the review on those, and we will reach out to the candidates very soon with the dates and details, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that's in the works. Thank you.
Alright, thanks for organizing that, Kristalyn.
Next, we have Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, City Council. Sheriff, City Manager. I'm not clear if the beach closing issue is agendized at this, for this meeting. If it is, I'll wait, if not, then I'll speak now.
Mr. City Manager, do you want to address that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and sorry for the confusion. On the agenda coming up under City Manager update, there is an item where I was going to discuss it, but we did decide to actually add it as a special agenda item. So, there is a separate agenda that was put out yesterday specifically for the discussion of beaches and whether they're closed for Labor Day weekend or not, and that meeting is scheduled for 8:30. Our purpose was to schedule that time to start right when the regular, this regular meeting ends. And so, if this meeting ends a little late, then that meeting will start a little late. If this meeting ends a little early, then I think we would then have to wait until 8:30 to start that item.
Great, thank you very much, I'll wait and speak at that agenda item then, thank you very much.
Perfect, thanks for that, Brent.
It doesn't look like we have any other, oh, we did just get one more, hold on. Michael Stogner, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Michael Stogner, I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight. I'm not sure if now's the right time to speak about this. I've sent a couple emails to your city manager this week, asking him to do a couple things, and he's informed me that it would be discussed tonight, so I'm not quite sure if this is the time to discuss it. If not, I'll wait, or I could just say my little short piece about it.
Mr. City Manager, do you want, we know what the topic's going to be. Is this right time, or is this, how would you like to proceed with that?
Sure, so I did receive a couple emails from Mr. Stogner, and I did reply to him. Actually, my reply was not, not quite that. I didn't indicate that the item that he wanted to discuss was on the agenda tonight, but I did indicate to him that I would have a reply for his request tonight. The items that he sent me an email on have to do with the DA's report that recently came out. The DA came out with their conclusions on the shooting of Sandra Harmon that occurred about three and a half months ago. And Mr. Stogner's request had to do with the conclusions that the DA came to in their report on that. And so, we can, so as I said, I was going to get back to him tonight. There is an item that I would say is indirect, very indirectly related to that topic, and that is, by coincidence, our captain Sal Lopez is giving his annual report tonight. That's something their contract requires, and that is on the agenda. But as long as it's come up, or as long as I guess I've brought it up now, I think it's proper now to just state that the Deputy City Manager Matthew Chittisler and myself had a meeting with the DA Steve Wagstaff today. And out of that meeting, he informed us that he is willing to come to a council meeting and make a presentation and take questions from the council and the public at a future council meeting. We asked for September 15th, which is your next council meeting. And so, that, that does not answer Mr. Stogner's questions. Again, I do plan to respond to him, but I think that's very important for us to hear the DA himself, and he's more than willing to do that.
Okay, and then let's, 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 thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. And Michael, let's, let's listen to you, and please proceed with your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, for some of you who do know me, I've been a private victims advocate in San Mateo County for the last 22 years. And for those who don't know me, I'll just introduce, that's sort of my history. I was born and raised in San Mateo County, lived there for 66 years. The only issue that I was bringing up, and I didn't expect it to be on the agenda tonight, that's why I just wanted to chit chat a little bit about it, is the fact that we obviously had a tragedy in Half Moon Bay, three and a half months ago, everybody knows that. We do know that occasionally, law enforcement and civilians, when they meet and they have emergencies, sometimes civilians will be killed. That's a part of the job, and we expect that to happen, and we also expect honest reporting when that does happen. What we heard, what everybody heard, was that there was a shootout. And what the district attorney issued the other day was a 12-page letter of simply his summary of what he was reporting to the public. And most of the media took his letter and just published that stating, here's what happened. I would say from, and I have actually seen many of the documents, and I will be seeing more shortly, and what I would suggest is that the sheriff has had three months, three and a half months, to demonstrate that there was actually a shootout. And we know for a fact that 11 shots were fired by one deputy, five of them, while she was unarmed with her hands above her head. And I have now confirmed that that is a homicide by the coroner's office. Steve Wagstaff's letter doesn't mention homicide. He doesn't mention that one deputy fired 11 out of the 14 rounds that were supposedly fired. I've asked the sheriff to please just tell me how many buckshot pellets, or you know, shotgun pellets were discovered that night. They claim there was a shootout, they claim, they don't actually say how many shots were fired. And so, I would just, and that's why I'm just mostly wanted you, I didn't expect you to talk to Steve Wagstaff, I didn't ask you to talk to him. He's made his position, and what I was asking for was for the city council or the city manager, and I didn't even send the email to the city council because I was concerned about a Brown Act violation. So, I was simply producing an idea. I believe this requires an investigation from outside of San Mateo County. And almost this identical scenario happened with the Shenandoah Kobe homicide in Millbrae by the same law enforcement agency, and the exact same people that investigated and said, no, no law was broken. So, that was my only position, thank you for your time. I know you guys are very concerned about this, and so is most of the public, thank you.
And Michael, thank you for, for spending so much time on these issues. We really appreciate your advocacy.
You're welcome.
There don't appear to be any other public comments, fair.
Excellent, alright, so we are going to move from the public comment section, public forum into the proclamations and presentations.
There are none on this agenda.
Okay, and then for mayor's announcements of community activities and community service, there are none, and report out from recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and community. The council did meet in closed session prior to this regular meeting. It meant to discuss one item, which was conference with labor negotiators with the agency-designated representatives Lisa Lopez and Bob Nisbet, the city manager, to discuss the following employee organizations: stationary engineers, local 39, represented managers, and unrepresented management. The council took no reportable action.
Excellent, and then city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As shown on your agenda tonight, there's four listed, and as I mentioned earlier, the third item listed there is actually the beach closure discussion that'll take place at 8:30. So, we'll do three updates. The first will be an update on the pandemic, and I've asked your communication director Jessica Blair to make that update today. She's going to focus on the new guidelines that the governor released earlier this week.
Thank you, next slide, please. Good evening, councilmembers and community. To start our city manager updates, we wanted to provide an update on COVID. On Friday, Governor Newsom announced a revamped plan for reopening titled "To a Safer Economy." The new plan became effective yesterday and builds on lessons learned from the first six months of the coronavirus disease and the new scientific understanding that has been collected to create a new system for regulating movement in COVID-19 transmissions. It includes at least 21 days to expand activities beyond the initial tier to ensure California better limits the spread of the virus, mandatory metrics that are case rates and test positivity to measure how widespread COVID-19 is in each county, and then guide what is allowed in those counties, a uniform state framework with four categories instead of 58 different sets of rules, a more nuanced way of allowing activity. Instead of open versus closed, sectors can be partially opened and progressively add to their operations as disease transmission decreases, and a new process for tightening backup again quickly when conditions worsen. Counties were put into colored tiers based on a classification of widespread, substantial spread, moderate spread, and minimal spread. All counties who are on the state's monitoring list were automatically put into the purple widespread tier, which is what San Mateo County is in today. On Tuesday, September 8th, the state will issue its first real set of tier classifications based on the data they've been monitoring for the past few weeks, and then changes will follow every three weeks. So, how it'll work is the state will monitor county data over the course of two weeks. Then if that data holds for a third week, the county could then move into the next tier or back if necessary. And counties can only move from tier to tier every three weeks. The two main factors the state is looking at are positivity rate and then cases per 100,000 residents. Next slide, please. There are a number of sectors that are allowed to open at each tier, and then throughout the course of moving through tiers, those sectors can open to greater capacities and at greater levels. So, for example, once counties are in the red or substantial spread tier, restaurants can open indoor operations at 25% capacity. And then once that county were to move to the orange or moderate tier, the restaurants could have 50% capacity and so on. The state has mentioned that it reserves the right to pause this plan if conditions such as hospitalizations necessitate the need to pause. And all counties in the state beginning yesterday were allowed to permit indoor operations with modifications for hair salons and barber shops. Other personal services such as tattoos, nail salons, massage services are still only permitted to operate outdoors. Additionally, all retail and shopping centers statewide were permitted to open indoors at maximum 25% occupancy. And the website that's noted here on the slide is useful, is you can enter your county, and then it lists the status of many different sectors. And it's also helpful to, you know, if people want to look ahead to see what might be allowed in San Mateo County's next tier, they can look on other counties that are in that tier currently to see what would be allowed. Next slide, please. So, these are the four tiers and the metrics needed for each. If a county's metrics fall within two tiers, the stricter tier takes precedence, which is actually what's happening in San Mateo County. Next slide, please. So, in San Mateo County, we were placed in the purple tier automatically since we were on the monitoring list. We have 8.6 cases per 100,000 residents, which falls in the purple and widespread category, but then 4.8% positivity rate, which falls within the moderate or orange tier. So, again, when counties are split amongst two tiers, the stricter of the two is where they are placed. As of today, there have been a total of 179 cases in Half Moon Bay, and then 261 collectively on the coast side, and that's from O'Grenada down to Pescadero, actually Montero down to Pescadero. And then regarding schools, so I know that's a hot topic for a lot of people. In-person learning cannot start until a county has been in the red tier for at least two weeks. And there are different, once they can reopen, there are lots of modifications there, but that conversation can't begin until a county has been in the red tier for at least two weeks. Next slide, please. So, this is an overview of the statewide metrics and the way that the four tiers are spread across the state currently. Next slide, please. This slide is specific to San Mateo County, so as you'll see, the 8.6 per 100,000 is what puts us in the widespread tier, but that 4.8 positivity rate actually falls in the orange, so it completely skips over the red tier. Next slide, please. And the new system of tiered categories was created with the long haul in mind until an effective vaccine is widely distributed. And so, as a community, we can work together to further slow the spread and get San Mateo County further into the reopening process. Any questions on that?
I don't believe there are any questions, thank you.
Okay.
Very nicely done.
Alright, honorable councilmembers, glad to be before you tonight. Myself and Cory Stalker from the city manager's office will give a brief update on the CZU Lightning Complex fire, and then Captain Lopez will share some additional information from his perspective. So, we'll start with Cory, is Cory on? I can't see the whole thing right now.
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
Perfect, so, good evening, honorable mayor, council, and community. I have a summary for our CZU Lightning Complex fires. Due to lightning strikes the weekend of August 15th and 16th, there were numerous lightning strikes that impacted San Mateo County and California alike, which started fires, and the fire clusters were labeled the CZU Lightning Complex fires that covered parts of San Mateo County and Santa Cruz County. Pescadero High School was opened as an evacuation center on August 18th, and the evacuation center in Half Moon Bay opened and was activated August 19th due to heavy smoke in the Pescadero area. Peninsula Humane Society and San Mateo County Large Animal Evac Group assisted with the movement of animal and pets in the situation. Next slide, please. On August 20th, all fires on the South Coast converged into one, and the city declared their local emergency on the 26th. There was damage to numerous parks, and as of, as actually of 8:31, or no, as of today, I'm sorry. As of today, I just received news that it's 45% contained, and many areas in La Honda, Pescadero, and San Gregorio have been allowed to repopulate, which is about roughly 3,600 of 6,000 individuals that are allowed to go back to their homes. Next slide, please. So, we held the evacuation center, thank you very much to the Unified School District from San Mateo, for Half Moon Bay High School. San Mateo County Human Services, which is HSA, in collaboration with Puente de la Costa Sur and the Red Cross, opened the evacuation center at Half Moon Bay High School. The Red Cross initially was providing hotel vouchers, which then eventually moved to the state to provide those vouchers. Puente was handling all donations and did an amazing job due to the generosity of the community. As we spent some time up there, I received numerous compliments from San Mateo County HSA members, talking about how great our community was in providing and handling donations and managing all of the donations, and just seeing how kind our community was to be able to help each other out in a time of such need. The evacuation center initially worked 24 hours around the clock for their initial opening, providing information, mental health services, food, hotel vouchers, and any other sort of information to assist the people who were evacuated. I believe it's closing at about 10 o'clock tonight, but it was working on a smaller clock, less than, I believe it was about 12 hours or a little bit more as it was starting to close off. Over to you, next slide, please.
Thank you, Cory. So, on the evening of August 20th, it became really apparent as we communicated with the county and with folks working up at the evacuation center that a lot of the people being evacuated actually had either RVs or trailers and were desiring to stay in those facilities rather than go into hotels, but there was nowhere for them to park. And we started to see them parked on city streets, a small group of them gathered behind Safeway, and it was obvious that something needed to be done. And we're really grateful to some community volunteers in conjunction with the mayor who made the decision that Smithfield could really be a great place to make this happen. So, on the evening of August 20th, we opened Smithfield for evacuees, the parking lots there and restrooms. This was only made possible, again, because of generous support from some of our community volunteers. First and foremost, we're really grateful to Cameron Palmer, who runs the Half Moon Bay RV Park. They're on Wavecrest Road, just down the street from Smithfield. They're, they're the ones that really made this possible because they have the dumping facilities for RVs, they have showers, and they generously offered all of those facilities to anybody that needed them. And that made it really convenient for people to park at Smithfield and then have access to those types of facilities. Our public work staff were really great in getting down there that evening and getting it open with just, within just a few minutes of decision being made, getting restrooms open. The restrooms are already serviced regularly, so we were able to provide sanitary facilities for those that were staying there. Republic Services, of course, our garbage service, solid waste management service here on the coast, acted quickly and brought over two dumpsters that, the morning of the 21st, which made sure that we had the capacity to serve as many different people visiting as possible. I, I was able to frequent the site a couple of times, and city staff checked in with folks regularly. It was really great, people were pretty self-sufficient, you know, they were in their own RVs and trailers. They were just really, really grateful to have a safe and clean location to park and just find some refuge for a couple of days while remaining on the coast. And of course, they were grateful to the RV park for providing them the services they needed to maintain that comfort. We also want to make sure we thank several of our community volunteers. Lisa from the RV park, who checked in on those folks several times a day for the last week. Amy Broome, Carrie LaBelle, and others who really just stepped up from the community. You know, this is, this is not their day job, and yet they were there to support these folks. And I think, as Cory mentioned, a great example of people willing to do whatever it took to make sure people were cared for and taken care of. We had five to 10 RVs there per night. At this point, everyone has returned to their homes except for one, and we're working with them to get them the services they need so that they can return to their home. And at that point, we will close the park again overnight and make sure that we can restore it to its normal park operations and day use operations. So, again, just want to really thank those that supported this. It was a great opportunity for us to serve the community at this time, and a great example of people moving, moving ahead and being really creative and serving the community.
I want to say thanks to staff, but a special thanks to our mayor Adam Eisen for hooking up with Cameron and making it possible to use the Wavecrest site. I know that that was actually the mayor's idea, staff jumped on it, so it was a really great thing, thank you.
So, one of the things that people want to know is how they can help, and one of the things that I think we learned from this experience is, there's a lot of different ways people can help. I think the, the natural inclination, and I've seen it both with COVID and now with the fires, is to gather belongings, personal items, and donate them, because you just think of what people are doing without some of their personal items and being evacuated. But what we found from these two different disasters we've been working through this year is that those types of donations are really something that come as there's a need that's been identified. And so, when there isn't an identified need, it does actually create somewhat of a complication for people serving the evacuees, because they're not stationed and prepared to take in donations, inventory them, make sure they're appropriate, and get them just distributed. So, I know that some people have been frustrated that donations of clothing or personal items couldn't be accepted up at the high school. But logistically, in a disaster like this, people are focusing on getting people evacuated and into a safe space, and the logistics of managing physical donations can make it really difficult to take care of those more pressing needs. And so, I think the key is if people want to help and can continue to help, because we know that people are going to need services for a while. Puente de la Costa Sur is the, the core services agency based out of Pescadero, and that's the, the region that is in need right now. And so, donations can be, can be made to them through their emergency fire relief fund. And if you just go to mypuente.org, you'll find links to that on, on the internet. The Coastside Comeback is another way to not only help people who are impacted by the fires, but also help our local businesses. The Coastside Comeback was originally developed by our, our local businesses and our downtown association as a way to support local businesses by buying gift cards. Now, this was before the businesses were open, and then they could be redeemed once the businesses were open. At this point, we can still support those businesses by buying gift cards for people that are impacted by the fires, so the local business gets your business, and those individuals and families get that support. So, coastsidecomeback.org.com is the place to go for that information. And then, of course, the American Red Cross is always accepting donations and a really key support in any kind of disaster. So, Puente, the Coastside Comeback, and American Red Cross are the best places to go and make cash donations right now to support people impacted by the fires. And, and again, a reminder that we know it can be frustrating, but sometimes in a disaster, physical goods, there's just no way to process and organize those, and so often, cash donations are the best way to support in an emergency. One of the other things that we just wanted to share tonight is, obviously, this was a tragedy, and we feel for anybody that was impacted by the fires, but we are prepared to use this experience as a learning tool. Your council, over the last two years, has prioritized emergency preparedness for the city and the community, and one of the things that we're working on is updating our emergency operations plan, which was most recently updated in 2015. And the, the real-life experience that our first responders, our community volunteers, city staff, and nonprofits have now are really going to inform and make that new emergency operations plan that much better. We have so much more context now, we really have seen where there's breakdowns and holes in the process, and, and the hope is that we can finalize development of that plan and incorporate what we've learned in a way that just really better prepares us for any future emergencies. So, we'll be, we'll be debriefing with the agencies and the volunteers, and as we continue to move forward with the development of the new emergency operations plan for the city, our future meetings will gather more stakeholder input, and I think we'll, we'll all be the better for it and better prepared in the future from what we've experienced in real life at this time. I noted in Chief Cosgrave's most recent letter to the CERT volunteers, you know, he said, "We've been preparing CERT volunteers for 15 years, and all of that preparation was put into action over the last two weeks, and it's been really great to see our community rally and take what they've been preparing for and put it into action." And again, it'll, it'll help inform the future as well and help us really be prepared for any future disasters. So, with that, we'll turn some time over to Chief Lopez. He can share any of his thoughts and any additional details from his role as the incident- He can share any of his thoughts and any additional details from his role as the incident commander, and then we can take any questions from the council.
Thank you, Matthew. I couldn't have said it better. Cory and Matthew really recapped what's been going on since the last council meeting. As you remember, I left, or we ended at midnight, and I went right into action into the EOC next door. So this fire began, actually during the weekend. They began monitoring it on Monday, the 17th, and then we initiated our field operations with the EOC in Redwood City on the 18th of August. And we are continuing to staff the EOC here locally. We have run 24-hour operations for this event. We have done multiple mutual aid deployments to not only Santa Cruz County, but also Monterey County while we were still worried about our south coast. I had anywhere between 50 law enforcement officers here, including deputies, up to 140, the initial mandatory evacuation zones when they went into effect. And we use CHP, very grateful for their helicopter and their fixed wing. We used every resource we could think of, and as Matthew and Cory mentioned, truly, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event. CAL FIRE had confirmed that an event like this hadn't occurred in our county or Santa Cruz in, in over 60 or 80 years or even longer. So they talk about DUF, which I didn't know the term for. It's basically that excess dry leaf material that falls from the canopy, and it was up to two feet deep in many areas. So there's definitely, you know, concern about that. I know the Half Moon Bay community is always concerned about Higgins Canyon and all these other areas that surround the city. And it's definitely an experience that we're going to propel forward with that emergency preparedness. I, I have to compliment Cory and Matthew. When I made the request in regards to Pescadero High School being in that mandatory evacuation zone, they, they jumped on it right away. They coordinated with the school, our superintendent, which we've established such a great relationship with. And all the county agencies were able to deploy there. So thank you again to Cory and Matthew and, and the city for the support and the community. They've been fantastic. We've had endless people coming up to the EOC to try to donate things to us, and it's been just fantastic response. And it goes to the message of how the coast side is united as one. So I, I can just say that we're continuing to staff not only here locally, but we have representatives from the sheriff's office, including myself, during the first week down at the base camp in Scotts Valley. And it's basically a city within a city of first responders, and it's a very robust and complex system that CAL FIRE sets up with all law enforcement involved, which is Santa Cruz County and San Mateo County. And it becomes a unified command structure. And I, I will say, this is probably one of the biggest events that we have responded to collectively, I think, as a county and locally, to, to address the needs of all the residents down in the south coast. So again, there is so much information that I can share. I'll be here until next week if I did. But the last 14 days have been 24/7 operation, utilizing a lot of the resources here locally in Half Moon Bay. And I wouldn't, I couldn't be more proud to have a EOC that was able to support these deployments that were continuing tonight and into the weekend. The one thing that we do have now is FEMA support. They have arrived. They're going to initiate a local assistance center down in Pescadero at the elementary. Puente is going to be a support group there for them, and all the county representatives are going to be there as well. And also, CAL OES is involved, so we have a really good response, you know, structure down there in Pescadero for all the people that are affected by this fire. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions. Again, I can provide more detail, but it is a vast amount of detail and information in the last two weeks.
I think that's great, great updates. Thank you. Are there any direct questions? Seeing, I don't believe there are any. So are there any other updates, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, there's one more, Mr. Mayor. This will be done by John Doughty and Maz, our city engineer, it looks like just Maz. So this item is an update on a study session that occurred at one of your council meetings, July 21st, I believe it was, on, on parking access issues, beach access issues. And so Maz is here to give an update on, on our activities related to that.
Bob, I can also mention that Jennifer is going to be talking a little bit about some of the trash-related issues. So we've sort of wrapped, wrapped that into this at this point as well, so.
Great.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Maz Musorguinha here, city engineer. Happy to be presenting this item to you tonight. Can I get the next page, please? So as Bob mentioned, the, this past July 21st, the city council held a study session to discuss the impacts of beach access and parking specifically in some of the residential areas that are adjacent to Poplar Beach and Francis Beach, where we have many visitors frequent, especially during the, the more, the nicer, nicer weather and the better months as we're heading into the fall. Staff was directed to investigate marking of street parking stalls within the residential areas and looking to really define the parking spaces that are available and minimizing impacts such as overcrowding and blocking of driveways and streets, making it challenging for residents to get to and from their homes as well as first responders in case of emergencies. How we're looking to achieve this is through a striping operation to mark corners of each of the stalls nearest the vehicular travel lane. What we're looking at doing is using the city standard eight-foot wide by 22-feet-long standard for parking spaces. And what, the picture here is right in front of Mac Dutra Plaza on Kelly Avenue. So essentially, we'll look at doing something similar to this in the other areas where you would have just the edges, the outer edges marked to provide a little bit more of law and order to where vehicles should be positioning themselves on different portions of streets. Next page, please. And some other considerations that we need to, that we were looking at as we go into this program, and we wanted to highlight a little bit tonight, was the number of parking spaces that are currently available are, will likely be reduced to some degree. Now, what I mean by that is that, here, an example here to, on this, on the image here is Alface Flurean Avenue, Alface Flurean and Miramontes Avenue. The northbound lane, right where you see Alface Flurean, between the driveway and that, that stop limit bar, right before you get to Miramontes, it's 52 feet. Right now, you could, theoretically, you could have three compact vehicles parked in that location. But when we mark it with 22-feet-length dimensions, it'll be, we'll have 44 for two spaces. So essentially, that would be one potential space that, that would become unavailable with, with these improvements. Another consideration to consider is the markings essentially creating an hour edge or a fog line visually for, for vehicles, even when the cars aren't parked. So that actually would lead to narrowing of existing travel lanes in some cases, and a possible positive outcome, which would be some potential traffic calming. With that, some of the streets that, some of the streets that we have in the neighborhoods will have, will be a little different. Each one will be a little unique in its own. Specifically, some of the, some of the streets that do not have standard curb and gutter will be a different way. We will, we'll be laying out a lot of these improved, these markings before we paint them. And so we'll have an opportunity to adjust and work from there. But it will look a little different in that if you have an unimproved shoulder, you, we, we wouldn't be able to paint on the, on the unimproved shoulders. So in that location, we'd look at whether the pavement edge was, was close enough to be able to mark on that location. And so visually, you would see it, you may see the parking stall just on the edge of the pavement, and then beyond it, maybe the, the parking space itself. So again, some special considerations will have to be made when we look at each location and, and looking at it case by case. And then last, the last piece is just, you know, just talking about with this improvement, we'll have to look at our needs regarding enforcement. Right now, we're not anticipating any additional staffing, but we'll have to monitor this as we move forward, and, and we'll update the council in the future. Next slide, please. So what we're proposing is, this, this is our pilot project that we're proposing to move forward with. The first phase is shaded in green. We've basically taken Kelly Avenue and Poplar Street, the two main, main points of beach access in this area, and have taken two block, two blocks going inwards from each other. We know that we've got a lot of high-intensity amount of parking north of Poplar and south of Kelly. So we're looking at that as our starting point. And again, this is a pilot project, and so we would look at how this would impact. We will monitor its success and, and the impacts that we see. And then there's a possibility of expanding this and completing striping in the center and actually completing the Alface Flurean neighborhood where, where parking designation isn't currently applicable. We will have some project-related impacts as well. Once we start construction, we'll have to post some no parking signs. We'll put those up 72 hours in advance of the work to notify residents of when, when we'll be coming around those, around those streets and to provide that identification that, you know, of the hours of when the parking would be restricted so that construction can commence. We anticipate about 24 to 48 hours. It would not be a full duration of time. Again, a lot of our activities will be limited to layout and striping for specific times during business hours. So after hours, we may have it, there, there may be some flexibility where we allow folks to come back and, and maybe the next day, block it off again. Once we get, once we get a little closer with the, with the contractor, we'll have a little more information on that. But that, that would be the maximum amount of impact, I would say, that, that folks would see, about one to two days of impacts. We are currently working on solicitation of contractors on pricing. I've talked to a couple of local contractors, and we're going to finalize our pricing and, and look at a tentative start. I've asked, I've asked to get this turned around pretty quickly. We're looking at starting this up the week of the 14th of September, if not sooner. And what we're, a couple of other pieces I wanted to highlight is, as this is a pilot project, one thing I forgot to mention was that we are going to be working with paint. We're not doing thermoplastic at this stage. We want to see the effectiveness of this, see how the community receives it and how it functions before we move forward with the more costly improvement and investment. So with that, that concludes my updates, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Maz, I appreciate you moving on this so quickly. We just came up with this recently, and I think Debbie Ruddick's idea. And I just appreciate that and the thoughtfulness you put into it and the immediacy, and we were just moving on it. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, well done. It looks very well thought out, and I, I like the idea of the pilot and the temporary paint. I mean, I think staff's done a great job on this. And who knows, it might, might not work for us, but I think it's, it's worth a try. I do think it's, it'll be important, and you probably have already thought about this, to do, we have a great communications team, do some, you know, outreach and community news, and this is coming. So it's not a surprise to people. And, you know, be able to take some, some input on it and explain what the, what the rationale for doing this is, and that is to reduce the parking impacts in the neighborhoods. So that would be, I think, an important piece. And I'm following this with, with real interest, and I just want to say thanks to staff for the time and effort you've put into it.
My pleasure.
Actually, I have one more question. Will this need a coastal development permit?
We were not anticipating this needing a coastal development permit, given that we're not increasing our impervious area. We will work closely with our community development department to ensure that. But given the, the amount of, given the type of work we're doing, we don't anticipate a CDP being required.
Good news.
Always good news. Go ahead, Ms. Jennifer Chong.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and members of the public. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I'm the Public Works Program Manager. I'm happy to be here this evening to provide a quick, solid waste management update. There's two-part components to this that I'll primarily be focusing on, which is our Big Belly Compactor Program and also our waste management plan for Poplar Beach. Next slide, please. So for a little bit of context, Big Bellies are high-capacity solar-powered compactors, really cool units. They have solar panels on the top, and they have a compacting mechanism inside. The intention of these units is to give you a normal-sized garbage container that gives you more capacity. And if you all recall, back in fall 2017, we had what we thought at the time was a very busy summer. Nothing compared to what we have now, but at the time, we were being hit with a lot of garbage, and we were looking for a way to try to increase the capacity at Poplar Beach that didn't include adding a bunch of garbage cans everywhere. And we came across this Big Belly, this Big Belly unit. And so we thought, you know, why not give it a try and let's see if it works. And so we got four dual-compartment Big Belly units. Each of them have 150-gallon capacity. We thought we're, we're in good shape. Clearly, that didn't work out for us. If you look on the picture on the left, you know, unfortunately, they're just, it did not provide the capacity that we needed at this location. And it didn't fit the type of garbage that was being generated at the beach, which was a lot of packaged, you know, a lot of goods that were thrown into a plastic bag and tied off. And unfortunately, the hopper in the Big Belly just didn't allow people to push those bags in to actually get it inside the unit so it can be compressed. That being said, we did add another secondary pilot location at Mac Dutra, and that seemed to be really well-received by the community. It was working really well. And so we started having a conversation internally about, you know, how can we redeploy the units at Poplar that are clearly not working? And, you know, put them in places throughout the community that they'll work, and they'll be welcome, and that they will actually help reduce some of the issues that we're dealing with. Around the same time, we started to have some other hotspots come out throughout the city that were getting more and more traffic, more garbage related to COVID-19. And so we decided, hey, let's go ahead and let's, let's try something else. This isn't working. Let's, let's redeploy these units. Next slide, please. And so last Friday, we actually had Big Belly come out and move all four of the dual-capacity units from Poplar Beach and put them in four other high-traffic areas that we think will be more appropriate for the service that Big Belly is intended to offer. I want to highlight the, the two locations at the top, which is Miramontes Beach and Stone Pine Shopping Center. We know Miramontes Beach has been a really, you know, big-ticket item for the community where there's been a lot of trash generated, not nearly as popular as Poplar Beach, but still, you know, in need of some, some love and attention. And so there is a Big Belly unit there now that we're hoping will help serve that area a little bit better. Stone Pine Shopping Center is another area that, you know, throughout COVID has gotten more and more garbage generation, likely because of all the takeout trash that's been happening. And so we think that that's another really great fit for, again, what the Big Bellies are designed to offer. And then the other two locations that now have Big Bellies are the H&amp;V Library and then the Skate Park, which right now, arguably, they're not getting as much foot traffic because they're closed. But when things start to, you know, reopen, we recognize that those areas are going to be heavily used by our community, and we want to make sure that they're kept nice and clean and that they have enough garbage capacity. I also want to mention that through, you know, through this relocation, we were able to secure a whole bunch of new parts for the Big Belly units. They have new front panels, new back panels, new foot pedals, new hoppers, new handles, hinges. And all of this was done at no additional cost to the city. So we were able to work out an agreement with the Big Belly Company to have them come out, move all the containers, you know, screw them all back into the ground, and replace all the parts at no additional cost. So we're really excited about these relocations. We hope that they will work. That said, we are always open to, you know, other, other options, and we'll be looking at that as these new locations start to get more foot traffic. All that said, I also, we recognize that now we have just taken away these units from a very, very high-impact area. All that said, I also, we recognize that now we have just taken away these units from a very, very high impact area. And so that remains one of the highest priorities when it comes to garbage generation. And we do have a plan. So it's kind of a two-part plan, and if we can move to the next slide. The first half of this plan is education. So if the Big Bellies and our, you know, collaboration with Abundant Grace for the Coastal Clean Team has taught us anything, it is that we can, you know, put all the right services in place. We can put all the containers in the right place. But if people do not do the right thing, we will continue to have a garbage problem. That's just the reality of, I think, the popularity of this particular location. And so we think that the first thing we really need to focus on is just educating the community and our visitors, making it, you know, very in your face when you're walking down the path, when you're, you know, paying for your parking permit, when you're coming back up, just reminding them that as many touch places as we can, that our expectation is that whatever you bring down, you're taking back with you. You know, you're leaving nothing but footprints and we're trying to communicate that in as many different creative ways as possible so the messaging doesn't get stale. And so before the July 4th weekend, we actually had these signs printed. If anyone's visited Poplar Beach or even Miramontes Beach, you might have seen them. We've been putting them out. And again, it's, I guess you can call it a pilot program to see if it makes a difference. But we're really hopeful that some of these signs will just get people to think just for a second about their impact on the beaches that they love so much and take a moment to hopefully take their garbage to the many garbage dumpsters that we have available, which is the second part of our plan for Poplar. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So our second part of our plan is just making sure that there is enough capacity. So again, the big issue that we had with the Big Bellies is that while they were nice and shiny and they looked great, they just didn't have enough space and the openings were not big enough for the type of garbage that was being generated. I recognize these dumpsters are not pretty. Our ideal would be to be able to move them away from, you know, such high visibility locations. But until people get into the habit of, you know, being willing to walk the additional 50 feet or 100 feet to put the garbage where it needs to go, we're hoping that putting them in high visibility locations will prevent them from just dumping it on the ground, which is what they were doing. I mean, these dumpsters were there when the Big Bellies were there. And instead of, you know, somebody taking their garbage and putting it in a dumpster 50 feet away, they chose to put it on the ground. So we're hoping that with the combination of removing the Big Bellies, making sure that these are nice and visible. Republic went ahead and added on some new tops for us. So these are, you know, they have the slit so people don't have to lift the lids to throw their garbage away, so the ill factor is taken away. And then it also discourages illegal dumping. So we think that with these three dumpsters, in total, there's 14 yards of garbage available that goes three times per week right now at Poplar. There's plenty of capacity here if we can get people to put the garbage in the right place. And so I think this is probably Plan C, D, or E for garbage management at Poplar since I, I joined the city, you know, three years ago. And although we, you know, while we're hopeful that this will get people to do the right thing, this will help us getting, help us trend in the direction that we want to go. We also recognize that, you know, this is a very difficult place to offer solid waste management and that we need to have another plan. You know, working in the background in case this doesn't work. And so, next slide, please. And so we're already working on next steps. Again, we're hoping that this will work, but we're planning for the worst. If this plan that we have, the education with the capacity doesn't work, what's next? What's Plan E or what's Plan F for us? And so our next steps will continue to monitor the location, see, you know, just test it. Same with the Big Bellies. Is this working or is it not working? If there are tweaks that we can make to the plan, we'll do that and we'll go ahead and troubleshoot. And meanwhile, while all of that is going on, we'll continue to have conversations internally about what are some other creative ways that we can increase capacity and increase compliance at this location? Is it building new enclosures or is it, you know, building a new type of container? Or, you know, finding someone that will build a new container? Or is it more signage and education? Where really, we continue to be open and eager to find creative solutions to make Poplar beautiful before and after the crowds. And, you know, we're, we're excited to see, to see where things go. So with that, happy to take questions or any comments from the council. And if I'm happy to pass it off to our final, our final CM update of the evening.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any questions? I have a couple of questions, just myself, if I can start off and then we can see. But when you took the, there was a picture of the Big Bellies. First of all, thank you for all this because I appreciate all the different, you know, ideas, moving parts. Try this, try that. And we, I will probably have to continue and I'm like very excited what you came up with. So some of those bags, I don't know if they're going to fit into that slit that is currently available on the dumpsters. And I'm just kind of wondering what are, I, I like that people are trying to bag their own stuff. And I, I appreciate the fact that the dumpsters have the tops and you, you know, you can throw it in there in the little area. But what if like those bags don't fit in there? I imagine people will just put them right next to the big dumpster. And I'm wondering, I, I appreciate the illegal dumping piece, but I'm almost wondering, is there one of them that we could do with like a, you know, a couple of big holes in it or something? Or a way to, to differentiate, maybe two of them have the slots and one of them's got something for bags or bigger boxes or something?
Sure. And so there are other lids. So Republic Service actually custom ordered these for us to give us something new to try to see if this would work. There are other lids that we can definitely, you know, switch them out and see what works better. My thought process, I went out and I actually saw these lids today. The slots are actually bigger than you would think. The pictures, I think, make them look a little bit smaller. My hope is that what folks have in those plastic bags are squishy. And if you give it a little push, that it would be able to pop through, pop through the slots. That said, I think Republic Services is on here as well, listening to some of this feedback. So I'll make sure to follow up with them, see if they have an alternative, maybe with bigger slots. And we can test, you know, different kinds of, kinds of dumpster lids.
Yeah, yeah, it might be nice to have one of those out in the open just to kind of, you know, with those two where they are, to have one of them differentiated. And I have no idea what I'm actually talking about, but when I just think about with the garbage that I see down there and the fact that I'm wanting people to, in the ideal, bring their own bag down, that, that if they come back up with a bag, and the, I, I, it's not that big of a deal if it sits next to it, you know, per se, but I don't like the aesthetic of it. So that's one piece. Number, number two, I, I love the way that the, the one on the left, the dumpster, is currently built into an enclosure. And I'm wondering if, if there's a possibility at all of the future of using enclosures for the other two. Maybe even one of them goes where the Big Bellies were before. Maybe it's wood up to a certain level and just thinking about that. And I know the current one on the left has some graffiti on it and wondering if we can kind of paint that over at some point as well.
Yes, and yes. So we've had some conversations about how to repurpose that concrete slab where the Big Bellies have been to make some type of enclosure, maybe use, put carts there instead or something that maybe has a flip lid. Some of the concerns that we have about leaving just the carts there by themselves is that they might roll away or, you know, the critters can get in them and then all the garbage flies away and now you have even a bigger mess than you had before. So that's something that we're very mindful about, especially being so next, so close to the ocean. But we'll make sure that we take care of the graffiti and we'll make sure that we continue to have those conversations about how to, how to continue to make these options available to people.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I, can I speak to that issue just briefly? I, I also want to, since this sort of dates to me and, and sort of was my vision and, and it's, you know, it's, it's hard to, to, to acknowledge and admit sometimes that, that you made a mistake and I think we made a mistake on those units at that location, but, you know, we try hard. One of the things that did come about when we established those at that location was, I would say a significant concern from a few individuals with regard to the visual and aesthetic and the blocking of the view to the, to the ocean with the Big Bellies. I think folks sort of finally got used to them and, and that was no longer a, a significant, significant issue for them. So I think anything and everything we do, we have to be very considerate of that or I think we will go down that same path about concerns regarding the visual aesthetic and, and ocean view there. So we're going to have to be very careful about what we do. And I think if nothing else, we're going to have to look at, at designs that, that are no worse or no more impactful than what the Big Bellies were in essence to, to at least sort of lay the profile to that. So we agree with you that the, that, that some form of enclosure and, you know, is, is probably necessary. We will have to, to evaluate that. We, we have some ideas. We've seen some, some things on the Bay Trail and some areas that, that, that might work with the, with the larger roller canister. So we're, we're, we're going to use this, this winter to try to plot out a plan for, to, to be implemented by the spring and the, and the next big usual run of spring break and beyond at Poplar.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate all the, all the attempts, all the ideas. I, I really don't, I, you know, as much as maybe the Big Bellies might not have been the perfect solution, I, I still think it's fantastic that we tried it and, you know, explored the different options. To me, you know, that's what it's all about. We got to try different ideas and see which ones work. So keep, keep coming after it. I appreciate them all. Keep them coming. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, you know, what the mayor said. I, I really appreciate the process and the creativity that Jennifer and other staff are, are putting, you know, to this project. I think it's a really important project and I'm happy to, you know, provide resources to help make it work. I do think that the education piece is, is really critical, so I'm glad we're thinking in that direction. So I think we should use every opportunity as potentially a teaching moment. But, you know, where we can, I know there's constraints imposed by trash hauler having to, you know, pick things up. But where we can use, you know, art to help make our point or to make it easier to dispose of trash or to pack it out. You know, let's do that, you know, let's make it attractive where we can. Let's make it, you know, fun where we can. I know, I, I saw one example of city, one of the speeches had this sort of like a big octopus and you put the trash inside the octopus and that was very cute. So I'm not saying we put an octopus out there, but apply some, you know, some art and education where we can. I think it's critical. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could just say one other thing.
Please.
Only that, we, we put together those signs pretty quickly and sort of in effort to, in the run-up with July 4th and, and sort of the COVID beach year that we've had. Clearly, our intention is to take that and, you know, make sure that those are bilingual and, you know, that they are speaking to in our education and our efforts is, is both Spanish and English. So I just wanted to make sure that the community heard that and understood that. And, and, and thanks to my colleagues for pointing that out as well during the meeting. I think that is an important piece to understand and that's something that the Coastal Commission is absolutely focused on at this point as well. So we want to do that and we will be doing that.
All right, very good. All right, we don't typically take public comment with regards to city manager updates, but I, I was informed that there are two hands raised, so I just figured let's quickly go to those. I'd like to hear from the public.
Thank you. Paulette Eisen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi. I want to commend the city on putting a lot of energy into this specific subject. I have an enormous aversion to trash and a, and a trashy looking city and this trashy beach, you know, all areas. But Jennifer, I have a spot for a Big Belly. And, and, and that spot, if you haven't considered it, is North Main and Highway 1. At where that light is on Highway 1 and North Main. I, I mean, right now, it's not such a major deal because high school is not happening, school isn't really happening. But that juncture, that area, when the kids are in school and they go to the, and they go to the shop, that little shopping mall and they buy stuff and they're, they just throw their wrappers and, and stuff or they go across the street. They just throw the stuff right there and it's a real like trash pit, a real trash collection. As I say, it's not a severe now situation we're in, but as soon as that's over and the kids are back in school, that is going to rear its ugly head again. So I think that's a great spot for the Big Belly Trash Compactor. Thank you.
Thanks, Paulette. Next, we have Kimberly Williams. Kimberly, go ahead.
Hi, this is Kimberly Williams and I volunteer with San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. And we regularly do, or at least pre-COVID, we regularly did beach cleanups out there at Poplar. I just wanted to say that we're happy to help in any way that we can to help with the education parts and to figure out some of these solutions. So please let us know if we can be helpful. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, very good. And then it looks like we're moving on to California Coastal Cleanup 2020.
Yep. Hi. Yep, thank you. It'll be, I think it's the last city manager update. So good evening, Mayor, City Council and members of the public. I'm Veronica Bosnak, the Sustainability Analyst, and I'm here today to talk a little bit about coastal cleanup events this month in September. Next slide. So as I'm sure you can imagine, coastal cleanup is looking a little bit different this year as everything is this year. So because of restrictions on large gatherings, we're not able to host events as we have in the past. So this month, this September, we have four coastal cleanup days. It's each Saturday in September. And with that, we have four Half Moon Bay team captains available to help. There's a way to track what you're picking up to make sure it's recorded and there's even some opportunities to win some prizes. Next slide. So there is a little bit of friendly competition within the cities and the county. So we asked the RSVP with your virtual team captain. There's four teams in Half Moon Bay. So we have the seashells, the tentacles, the seahorses and the sunfish. So each of these teams have a site captain that will be available virtually to answer any questions, help you out with anything that you need or also provide supplies. So we want to make sure that everybody's being safe out there. I know there's concerns when picking up litter. So if you don't have bags, buckets, gloves, you can reach out to any of these site captains when you RSVP and they'll be able to help you get some of those items. I have a link at the bottom of this screen. If you go to that link, there's more information about the teams and their contact information so you can connect with them. So if you're interested, please go to the website to get some more information. Next slide. So once you have RSVP'd with your team captain, you're ready to go. So you can go and pick up litter. You don't necessarily need to go to the beach. You can pick up litter within your neighborhood. Any trash that's on the street or in the environment may end up in the waterways. So it's important that we capture that as well as trash that's on the beach. So please go out with your household or your social bubble. We don't want people to be socializing otherwise. And one of the great things about coastal cleanup each year is the ability to get a lot of really great data on what litter, what trash is near the waterways. So if you can, please download the Clean Swell app. You can see there's some screenshots of what the app looks like below. It's a really cool, easy to use app run by the Ocean Conservancy. You can kind of, especially if you have two people, it's pretty easy to just record what you have, what you're picking up as you do it. what you're picking up as you do it, and it gives you a nice summary at the end. And if you put your team name in there, they'll get credit for that as well. So make sure you download that app and then your data for what you've picked up will be available for researchers or legislators. It's really important that we have that information. So if you can, please use that app to record what you get. Next slide. And last, because we won't see you all in person, please post a picture of yourself, your family or social bubble on social media. And if you tag San Mateo County Health and the City of Half Moon Bay, you'll also be entered to win a $50 gift card. So two winners will be selected each week, so each coastal cleanup day. And thank you to Republic Services for providing some funding for one of those prizes. So each week, one of those prizes will be available for Half Moon Bay city residents and students. So again, please take a look at that link. I put it up again. There's a lot of information there about the contest, about the teams, about the events in general. So go on the website if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer any. And I hope I see a bunch of people out there this month.
That is great. Veronica, thank you for keeping all that stuff going even in these crazy times. And I think it's just a creative way to make it all happen. So I'm very appreciative and thanks for the creativity.
Awesome. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one more important announcement of a very important upcoming meeting and Jill will make that announcement.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I realize I recently gave you a similar announcement that we had to continue the item. The local coastal land use plan is going to the Planning Commission on September 8th. We continued the item for a public hearing from August 25th because of the fires. We were really being responsive to public interest in this, in our topic. And the Planning Commission understood it. We received a lot of appreciation for having done that. So we are ready to go. This time it will be September 8th, Tuesday night, 7 o'clock PM. It's our Zoom format similar to this. We are prepared to take public comment. A packet did go out for the August 25th meeting, which means that folks just got another couple of weeks with that material. A new packet will come out on Friday. Staff is continuing to meet with interested parties and we are refining this work product as we move on to public hearings. So we're very eager to make that step and then to see you at the end of September for your special first part of a two-part public hearing on September 29th. Thank you.
Excellent. Jill, very exciting. Thank you for all that work. That's a major, that's a real major project. That's lots of years coming up. I appreciate it. All right, are we done with the city manager updates? So, yep. All right, so we are moving into consent calendar. There are three items in the consent calendar. Does anybody want to poll or discuss any of these items? Does anybody want to make a motion on any of these consent calendar items?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave readings of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, Sam Energy Efficiency and Infrastructure Improvement Projects. And item 1C, library capital donation.
Do we have a second? Oh, good. Sorry. Second. Beautiful. And Jessica, will you kindly do the honors?
Yes, Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick.
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone.
Yes.
Mayor Eisen.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. And we're moving on to ordinances and public hearings. Item 2A is a second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 8.04 Animal Control, Chapter 9.12 Public Nuisances Affecting Public Peace and Safety, and Chapter 9.13 Park Regulations or Reintroduce with Amendments.
Mayor, councilmembers, Catherine, you'll take it after this if needed. I guess I'll roll with this. This item is a little out of the ordinary in terms of second readings. They're usually a pretty perfunctory response, however, due to some community concerns and comments that came up and I think some overall questions about a couple of other items. The staff has recommended that we take this issue up just for a conversation to determine whether to proceed with the second reading or to take other action in essence to reintroduce with potential revisions. So as you may recall, on July 21st, the council approved a series of revisions as part of an ordinance amendment package. Those were to Chapter 8.04 Animal Control, 9.12 Public Nuisances, and Chapter 9.13 dealing with park regulations. This initially had started as a cleanup to, to some extent, of a 2019 park ordinance revision and sort of fell into several other areas and revisions that seemed to make sense to move forward with. So subsequent to the second, the second reading, which was scheduled, I believe, two, three weeks ago, we did receive some community comments concerning particularly whether alcohol should be permitted on city beaches. And just to be clear, the city beaches are basically Surfers Beach, Poplar Beach, and then there is a portion of the Vista Verde or the Miramone's Point area that is also city-owned beach as well. But this would primarily be applicable to the Poplar and Surfers Beach area for the most part. At that point, what we were trying to do and what we explained in the initial process, but probably not as cleanly and clearly as we could have, is that in 2019, there was an ordinance revision. We added beaches to the list of city parks and inadvertently changed what had been in place for the last almost 40 years or so, a provision that allowed alcohol on the beach to prohibit alcohol because alcohol since at least 1980 has been prohibited in city parks. So this effort was to clean up what we believed was an inadvertent action by the council in 2019 to make a very major policy change in essence to prohibit the use, the consumption of alcohol on the beaches. As with most things, this is clearly a policy issue of the council. And as we indicated on the 21st, state parks does not allow alcohol on their beaches. So that's if you're asking what are neighboring owners doing under the state provisions, they do not allow alcohol. I, you know, I would be sort of remiss if I didn't note that right now alcohol is prohibited and all of the things identified by the community as issues concerning alcohol have occurred and are occurring within the context of where alcohol is actually still prohibited at the beach. So that remains a challenge and issue of how do you actually deal with the issues on the bigger picture of enforcement and education. That being said, there was also sort of two issues that I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what we were proposing to do. And that was the deal with off-leash dogs. And what the ordinance recommends is that they remain only restricted now unleashed and off-leash dogs to the dog park itself. But what the ordinance would allow is the council to take up at a later action, specific actions to potentially designate other areas in the city on city-owned land as off-leash areas. That would again require specific action by the council, but it would not require an ordinance and a first and second reading in 30 days after that point to become effective. So it was an attempt to streamline the potential action by this council or a future council to do that. The second piece is a similar issue, which was the provision that we suggested that perhaps down the road, we may be looking and should look at a fire pit kind of program that would allow in very limited areas on Poplar Beach, for example, a program of city-owned pits and allow folks to actually enjoy that piece of opportunity that are available in other beaches in the state. Again, nothing would change at this point. Fires are prohibited on the beaches. But this would again allow for a streamlined process by which the council would adopt or approve a program, obviously through a public process, and then go with that. Would not require again a first and second reading and a 30-day effective point with that. So with that, again, these are all three. And obviously, the remainder issues are primarily policy issues. But overall, again, a reminder that this was intended to, one, include actually beach regulations and policies and processes that don't exist today under our ordinances was to clarify and clean up some issues. And then basically just again fixed a few of minor revisions and changes that were made in 2019 that inadvertently kind of happened as we were not thinking fully through. I take responsibility for that as much as anybody about the implications of designating the beaches as parks and what those things were. I'm happy to answer any questions. Catherine certainly can speak to any issues regarding process procedurally where we are. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, very good. Robert, I assume you're going to have some questions?
Yeah, just one clarification question. So my understanding is this process allows for future decision-making and, you know, flexibility as to where we want to go. So for example, when it comes to, before we would finally decide as a city council or city, let's say, to allow alcohol on any particular city beach, we will gather more input from the community.
No, no, that's the distinction that we're dealing with. Councilmember or Vice Mayor, sorry, through the mayor. What we are suggesting is that, well, what we suggested was it was a policy decision that wasn't, you know, I think clearly identified and intended to eliminate the alcohol, allow the use and consumption of alcohol on the beaches as part of the 2019 revision. There was no discussion about that effect, that policy, there was nothing going. We were simply trying to return back the policy to what had been in existence for the prior 40 years, which is alcohol consumption was allowed on city beaches. This ordinance, as it is currently introduced, would allow alcohol on those beaches. You would have to return with an ordinance revision at a later point to take back and prohibit alcohol. So now would be a good time to have that policy conversation and determine if, in fact, the community and the council wants to continue the prohibition of alcohol. The other two items were deemed to be just, you know, a different policy kind of issue and allowed some flexibility for future actions down the road with the council.
Got it. So I appreciate that clarification. So I think this is an interesting situation because I am still waiting to get input from people who live in the Poplar neighborhood that they would like to see alcohol permitted on the beach, regardless of what happened for the last 40 years. But I've only seen feedback saying, no, we don't. You know, we had some, now it was only four letters we received, but they were pretty strongly worded. So I'm a little confused as how we move forward knowing that we're really not sure if that's what, you know, the most immediately affected neighborhood, at least vis a vis the Poplar, you know, feels like without outreach. And then how do we resolve that?
And John, maybe can we talk about how, where the recommendation, I guess, to go that route came from? Or why it was decided to even look at that, just so we have a background of it?
Well, again, I think the simplest way to put it is that we don't think, we absolutely, I can absolutely say that in 2019, when this came before, I think all of you, this was not highlighted as a policy issue and a policy change that was occurring, that we were prohibiting alcohol. Because honestly, staff did not fully go through the iterations to see that once we designated Poplar and Surfers Beach as parks, they automatically fell under the prohibition of alcohol. It, you know, so that's the, that's the challenge. That's kind of the issue. So at that point, we just never felt that there was a policy action taken or even a disclosure that that was happening. And so again, for staff, the, for 40 years, alcohol had been permitted on the beach. And so we were seemingly coming back and saying, let's correct what we believe was not a policy act intended by the council at that time in 2019 to do so. Again, times change, policies change, you know, people's attitudes change. And that's why we're here.
As a policy matter, I would like to prohibit alcohol on the beach to be consistent with the state parks to allow to have a more orderly beach scene. That's where I'm coming down on, from a policy standpoint.
And so just, do you want to weigh in on this? I'm just curious from an enforcement perspective, you know, and especially as myself. What I've learned is when we put restrictions in, that's where, you know, there's people that take pictures of other people and this and that, and we go back and forth and these things get difficult to enforce all the time. So I just want to get your perspective on it.
Sure. We did touch on this in 2019, I believe, when we had the series of issues on the beach. Again, I'm not going to advocate for one side or the other. I will say that if there is a prohibition on alcohol consumption on the beach, it will make it more difficult for us to enforce because obviously people can conceal that alcohol in different containers. Most of the issues that we've had have not been with adults. As we all know, it's been with juveniles or teenagers going by Seymour Ditch and consuming alcohol on the weekends or those high school parties. So I do not recall of any citations that we issued to people over the age of 21 that were to say drunk in public or in arrest on Poplar Beach. So again, I can't give my opinion on which way the council should vote. But again, my perspective is juveniles will always be contacted if they do have alcohol of any kind. That is always going to be illegal under 21. And it's been my experience that adults are for the most part responsible. And we are not responding to Poplar Beach or any of the city beaches for people being drunk in public over the age of 21.
Right. Okay, that's good feedback. Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Any other comments?
I'm with Harvey on the alcohol issue.
Which is that we should not, it should be prohibited?
Yeah. I just think allowing it just leads to trouble. And I know it's something we would have to enforce. But I think if we at least say that it's prohibited, you know, we discourage it to some extent. And having lived at one time very close to the beach, I can tell you there were a lot of problems with alcohol on the beach. So I'm leaning definitely against allowing alcohol. I understand how it happens. You know, for decades, there was an argument on the part of many in the city that the city didn't need to acquire much in the way of parkland because the beaches were our parks. And so the beaches were folded in, you know, to our sort of And so the beaches were folded in, you know, to our sort of park acreage, if you will. It was a way to show that we were doing our share. I think that was, I disagreed with that approach and I'm glad, you know, we're changing that approach. But I continued to not want alcohol.
Deborah, where are you weighing in on this?
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm tending toward allowing alcohol on the beach because of the points that Saul made that in general, his experience has been that with adults, there is not a problem when alcohol is present. But the problem occurs when it's children, kids under 21.
I lost it for just a second. You muted yourself.
Sorry, I just, I'm unsure, but I tend to, I'm tending toward allowing it.
Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to just remind you that this, because this is either the first reading or the second reading of an ordinance, depending on how the council goes, this is a public hearing. And so I do see a hand raised. And so maybe before you guys continue with your deliberation, we go through the public hearing.
Let's do it. Open the public hearing. Thank you for advising me of that. Appreciate it. Public hearing is open.
Paulette Eisen, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So on this one, what John didn't mention is that this was brought up in front of the Parks and Rec Commission. And we did discuss this. It's a tough one because God knows I like having a glass of wine at the beach or something like that. And so it's not easy to come down on the other side of it. But that is what we all eventually did, especially when we were clearly informed that the state parks prohibits alcohol at the beach. We really need to have consistency on the coast. It's just so crazy with all these different jurisdictions and their own rules and this and that. Nobody, you know, people who come here, they don't have any idea when they've stepped into the state beach part and now whether they're in the Half Moon Bay or the county. And, you know, there's no way they're going to understand all these different rules for this, this portion and that portion of the beach. And so that's why we came down on the side of going along with the state, the state thing, even though like myself, you know, I'm not that thrilled with that. But at the same time, for consistency's sake, that that seemed to be the best way to deal with it. Thanks.
Good. It's good info. Thanks for chiming in. Nice to hear the perspective of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thanks, Paulette. I don't see any other hand raised.
Okay, very good.
Hold on. It keeps going back and forth. Okay. Space Odyssey, go ahead.
And Space Odyssey, you're on mute if you don't know it.
I would oppose alcohol on the beach that I think it makes for a more family friendly atmosphere. And I also think many people will be getting in their cars and driving home and with the heat on a beach, I just overall think you have a nicer beach without heavy duty alcohol on it.
Yeah, well, I think, I think everybody can agree that heavy duty alcohol is not a great situation on the beach regardless. So thank you for those comments. Very good. We got a couple more, Robert.
Then there's one more. David, go ahead.
Actually, this is Space Invader. I just wanted to thank the anonymous commenter for her feedback and input. And I think this is how all meetings should be run. Anyone can say anything they want without actually saying who they are. That's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, David. All right. So may I close the public comment period? All right, I'm, there, it's closed. All right. Great input. Thank you so much for weighing in on this one. And bring it back to council now. And Robert, did you want to start?
Yeah, it's just one, I mean, the real issue on beaches is, you know, we prefer not seeing, we prefer people acting responsibly. And obnoxious behavior, whether, you know, it's in a restaurant or on a beach or a park, is always something that ruins the fun of other folks. And if you're someone who is somewhat of an obnoxious behavioral person, I've never seen alcohol lessen that level of obnoxious behavior ever. It always intends to increase it. So it's really more the behaviors that we're looking at. And it does seem like a really weird inconsistency that the state beaches prohibit it and we'd allow it. And then all of a sudden, our city beaches get known as the places where you can, you know, party and not. I realize it's tough. It's always going to be tough to enforce that. But if anything, I think it gives anyone who's enforcing a little bit of an extra, you know, tool. You know, it might come up on some people, they're being rowdy and say, hey, by the way, you got to get rid of this alcohol. It's not allowed. And maybe keep something, you know, sort of keep that behavior from increasing. Gives you sort of like a bit of a red light potential for anyone enforcing. So and again, I'm just waiting to hear from more people from the public who are saying, no, no, we really think it's good. You know, it's cool, chill. Let's have a little fun. But I'm just not hearing that. So I'd like to hear, you know, so I hear some more of that from the public. I'm really not sure why we would go down this road right now by allowing the alcohol.
I'll give you myself right up. I mean, but I, and we can talk about how we're going to vote on this. But I love going down to the beach with a bottle of wine and my wife. And we sit there and we've got two chairs and we've got our wine and cheese and we watch the sunset. And that happens a lot in my life. And I appreciate being able to go down there and do that without having to worry, am I breaking a law? Am I this or that? That being said, I'm fine, you know, with whatever we decide. But just in terms of that aspect of it, that would, you know, especially as us as public officials, it makes it so we can't do that ever again because ultimately speaking, we can't break the own laws that we make. So I mean, just personally, to not be able to have a glass of wine on the beach ever again. I mean, I don't, I don't like that, just to be straight up. That being said, I can support it for the overall good of the community. But that would be my, my quick, you know, immediate piece on it. And it's not like I'm disturbing anybody or, you know, anything weird. In fact, I've had more people in my life come and say, you know, I've really enjoyed watching you and your wife on the beach. We've always wanted to meet you, you know, blah, blah, blah. And it's just kind of like, so that aspect of it. So I don't know. It's something I've missed.
Okay, I just want to answer that, though. You know, whether you realized or not, it was already illegal on state beaches to go down with your wife. And you may have already been doing that necessarily.
Well, not state beaches. I'm talking Poplar. I mean, that's where I live.
Okay. Got it. Well, it's been illegal on state beaches forever and people still probably go down for a glass of wine. So again, like I said, it's one of those tools for people who just can't seem to control their behavior on alcohol.
No, I hear you. No, I get it.
And probably if you're being, you know, just quiet and normal, no one's going to hassle you. I mean, that's the reality of it, that I'm seeing it. You know, it is a fine, fine line there. But in terms of how things would actually play out in real life.
No, I hear you.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, I like the precedent of saying, I mean, personally, I like the precedence that it sets to keep the area more, you know, as somebody mentioned, family friendly, under control, all the different aspects. I just don't like personally that one particular aspect where like I'll be now like breaking the rules if I do that. And that's just like, oh, I don't want to put myself in that position. So I mean, that hurts me just from that perspective, but that's all I got on that one.
358 misdemeanor arrests and 35 burglaries. So the misdemeanor arrests do look quite high, but the majority of those arrests were for warrants. And these are folks that not only live here within the city, but also visitors. Driving a suspended, driving a vehicle with a suspended license is also a misdemeanor. So we had approximately 44 of those incidents. Possession of methamphetamine or paraphernalia. We had about 70 incidents in this 358. And other possession of other narcotics are misdemeanors now. So a lot of those arrests are captured. Most of these arrests that I did mention are just a citation and a release based on current law. And another thing that I like to focus on is the auto burglaries. This is a very low number for a city our size, especially with all the vehicle traffic that comes in onto the coast side. So we averaged about three a month with the 35 total for the fiscal year. DUI arrests went up slightly from 39 the previous year to 46. So we did have an increase in DUI arrests, which is always a positive thing for the quality of life of the residents here in Happy Moon Bay and also the safety of vehicular traffic here in the city. So moving in parking citations, you'll notice the previous fiscal year, 2018 and 2019, for parking, it was about 3,400 and traffic citations were 2,100. Throughout the year, the council had asked me to implement additional traffic enforcement, which I did with a motor officer coming in on the weekends and other patrol deputies supplementing our regular patrol staff. So this past year, we increased our citations close to 400, 400 total. As you see in the yellow bar there, that's traffic enforcement, moving violations. Parking did decrease close to a little bit over 1,000 citations. And this has to do with the COVID closures that we had of the beaches and also the suspension of parking enforcement in downtown because most businesses were closed. So there was minimal parking violations in the downtown corridor. But as we continue to start opening up and there's more vehicular traffic through the city and the coast side, well, these numbers, I expect them to increase. Oh, sorry. Department and offered free tax assistance to many of the coast side families. And we also offered free COVID testing as well. And as COVID impacted all the in-person classes, Karen switched over to a virtual webinar program and they continued interacting with most of the families they had previously worked with. And again, Karen set up a texting platform to promote the census and community engagement with the residents of Happy Moon Bay. There was a healthy relationships webinar that they created, also hosted that parent cafe. And it was conducted every Friday. And we again set up a helpline for undocumented immigrants needing assistance during COVID nineteen. Held virtual exercise classes with families in Happy Moon Bay and partnered up with, again, the local nonprofits and the county on mental health during this COVID nineteen period. So the one thing I did want to hit on here was a psychiatric emergency response team, which I have mentioned before. This is made up of two detectives and two BHRS mental health clinicians. PERT as it's, the acronym is used as a resource for our deputies to contact after we're involved in situations out in the field between July and June thirtieth. The fiscal year Happy Moon Bay had a total of forty nine PERT referrals, where basically the PERT team actually reviews the cases that we, we conduct out in the field and they follow up not only with the deputies, but also the family members and those people affected by mental illness. One thing that I mentioned previously is that we are increasing our PERT program to create a enhanced crisis intervention team. Currently, we have CIT, which is the crisis intervention team, but we're trying to enhance it with specialized deputies that are trained further in what we normally give. We have about a hundred percent completion of every single deputy in our office that has conducted this training, which is about forty hours. We sent a few of our PERT members or the two detectives plus a few more folks up to Portland, Oregon, because they were the leaders in mental health crisis intervention with their community, the Portland Police Department. We found that once we were up there, although they have a great program, our basic forty hour program far exceeds what Portland teaches their officers. So we're proud to say that we are probably the most advanced in crisis intervention training in the state as of now and will continue to try to create a more robust program in order to de-escalate a lot of those mental health incidents. And these are just some of the cases where PERT was involved. There was a female subject who attempted to jump out of a vehicle, PERT followed up with her, even though she had already was in contact with a therapist. PERT did assist her in identifying with coping skills to support her. Another case was a mother didn't know how to support her daughter. PERT determined that the family assertive support team would be a good resource for them. And that's basically what PERT does. They get involved to try to bring resources, either county or other resources available to people that most families aren't aware of. So we are trying to connect those families that are being impacted by mental health crisis and bring them, you know, give them a solution. So our law enforcement personnel does not get involved with that family down the road and there's a form of recovery for them. And that is it for my annual report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Ruddock.
So, um, this is all wonderful information and I especially appreciate all the community programs that you have. Um, I'd be interested is, you know, sort of our frontline guys in the community, what you're seeing in terms of trends? Like, I don't see it captured in data specifically, but is, so domestic issues like spousal abuse, child abuse, that sort of thing. How much of that are you seeing? Is that trending upwards because of COVID? What, what sort of, how many of your calls seem to be related to those sort of domestic disputes? And I say that as a policymaker, trying to get a handle on what's going on, you know, in our community. What, what should we be knowing about so that, you know, we can address or work for the county?
Sure. Yeah, great question. And, and you're correct. I mean, during this COVID time where people are indoors together more, there, there is situations that arise to domestic violence. Luckily, we haven't seen a trend or an uptick here on the coast side or in Happy Moon Bay. But in other parts that we serve, North Fair Oaks, Redwood City and other parts of the county where we are capturing all this data, including Happy Moon Bay. So every month I do get internal reports on what's trending. I will say that the focus of domestic violence, first of all, has to be reported to us in order for us to find out what's going on and to really intervene in those circumstances. So we are not seeing it here on the coast side. It doesn't mean it's not happening because we know it does in regards to child abuse or, or child assaults, as we know, most incidents or the majority of them are reported at, at school because teachers are mandated reporters and so are physicians. And as we have all read and know, the, you know, obviously not attending school in person or, or going to regular checkups, we are not made aware of those situations. We do have a good communication network with Child Protective Services and APS, Adult Protective Services, where if they do find an incident or suspicion on a specific family where they, they suspect there is some type of abuse, either with a minor or an adult, they do send a report to us, our investigations team or our bureau reviews it and then they send it back to our patrol team where we go investigate and go knock on doors. So we are doing that. So that's one of our biggest concerns. What you, you asked about and as of right now, Happy Moon Bay has not seen that. So what's trending in, in crime would be more theft related, more crime of opportunity where people are still leaving, you know, their items unlocked, unsecured, visible to passersbyers. There is, obviously I share with DUIs, they're not extreme because I, I think people are still being responsible using the rideshare programs. And you, I, I would say that drug possession, theft and more minor issues are going on in the city and on the coast side compared to other areas. We're, we, we still haven't seen the impacts of violent crime come, come here. There are some assaults and there's some fights throughout the coast side that occur, but it's not a consistent behavior that we're observing or in or, you know, responding to. So I, I will say that Happy Moon Bay is consistently has very low crime in comparison to other coastal towns and in other communities that are, that have a population between eleven to thirteen thousand folks, especially with the amount of traffic that comes in. And I always go back to the victims of these incidents. As, as you can see, a hundred and sixty five out of the three eighty five. I mean, those are pretty good numbers for residents here of Happy Moon Bay because most of the people reporting it are in other locations within the city, but they do not reside here. So kind of a long-winded answer, but I just wanted to give you an overall picture of kind of what we're.
Very helpful.
Yes.
I heard you mentioned the word minor. Do you talking about minor and, you know, sort of minimal or insignificant? Or are you referring to minors, juvenile?
No, I'm sorry. It's so, so the minor, minors would be, what I mentioned was, you know, minors of being victims of abuse. But minor crimes would be more of the misdemeanor crimes where they are citing release type of, you know, crimes. And we will intervene when there's a habitual offender, right? If somebody's going into, you know, Safeway and picking up a bottle and just running out and they continue to do that, well, then there, there are things that we can do in order to not only give them a citation, but actually book them into jail to stop that behavior for that evening or the, the second or third night as a habitual offender. It's rare, but we do have that capability of doing that. So again, I, I am, I am pleased that even though some people are impacted by certain crimes in this community, we are at, on the very low end in comparison to other jurisdictions, even within the county.
Thank you.
I'll go around the room real quick. Deborah, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Saul, for your report.
Thank you.
Excellent. Harvey?
No, I also want to thank you, Saul.
Thank you.
And Debbie, I'll just check in with you before we go to Vice Mayor. Did you ask all your questions, Councilwoman Ruddock?
Yes, I, I thought those were helpful responses. I, I would say that the, the sort of information you were giving me is the kind of information that I would like, you know, to have annually to understand, you know, what's happening in the community, not just the stats, but what, what are behind the stats? You know, when there's a call, what does that call mean? You know, what, what's happening and what are you seeing? Because you're sort of our boots on the ground, you know, you're, you're seeing a lot of this, you know, for the first time, you know, as, as things are happening. So that's sort of not just quantitative stats, but the qualitative piece. Like, what does it mean? What are you seeing? You know, what do we need to address is very helpful, I think. So thank you for taking the time with that.
Absolutely. And just to, to remind the council, what, what I do is that I meet with Bob every two weeks or as needed. If there is something that's trending or I feel that he needs to know in order to convey to the council, we do meet on a regular basis. As you know, you've received quarterly reports, you will receive the end of the year stats as well. And those are compiled consistently. And with, in addition, every shift, every operational period, which is twelve hours, six AM to six PM and six PM to six AM, every patrol sergeant creates notes for me for review just on what activities occurred. And then I take a look and once I see something trending, we address it. We bring in additional resources, either it's, you know, our gang intelligence unit investigations, the narcotics task force, it just depends on the actual incident or the trend we will bring in. And we are very innovative with our office and we kind of lead the county with intelligence-led policing, where we do utilize the best technology in order to identify that crime from occurring or continuing or, you know, a response to, to the crime. So.
Excellent. Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yeah, Saul, thanks for the terrific report. Very informative. Just one quick question. I know it's come up before and constituents always ask regarding parking citations and tickets. Where does, what's the breakdown of where that money goes? People are always thinking, hey, more tickets, we get more money in the city. Just wondering if you can clarify that.
Another, yeah, another great question. It's one of those questions that I probably won't give the best answer to because as you all know, once the master fee schedule is adopted, we utilize that to apply the fee to each violation, whatever it is. That ends up going to the, to the courts. So it is my understanding that the courts do have a reimbursement schedule. And I believe it starts either at the state level or at the county level. And the way those fines are redistributed would be up to them or the way it's set up through the court system. I can probably work with Catherine, not to, to invite her into this situation, but I can probably work with her and whoever Bob designates in order to, to get those real numbers. We have nothing to do with the numbers, quite honestly. Once we issue the citation, because we are essentially working for the city as a contractor. So whatever fines you impose, we, we, we enforce them. And then whichever way the court decides to redistribute them back to the city or to whoever is up to them. I know that.
Yes. I was just gonna add, and Councilmember Brownstone, great question. And staff is doing a deeper dive on this very question. And so we are working on looking into that deeper and, yeah, going beyond what Sal knows. Like he said, he issues the ticket and then from there, the court's involved and there's other factors. And so when we present our report to the Public Safety Committee next Tuesday, we're gonna present some information about that question.
Okay, good. Thanks, Saul. And the reason that comes up, just real quick, Robert, and we've heard this from so many different constituents, so many different times. It's, hey, if we hire more people, shouldn't we be able to pay for it with the amount of tickets that we give out? And, and the truth is, personally, I don't know that answer. And I think that's where that's coming from is to be able to, when those constituents in particular are like, well, if you give out a hundred tickets, you should be able to then pay for the person. And I think that's where that's coming from is to be able to, when those constituents in particular are like, well, if you give out a hundred tickets, you should be able to then pay for the person each day. You know, more or less, I mean, not numbers wise, but uh, and is that true generally speaking? You know, and that's where that's that question's come from. Maybe we can get more feedback from it later. Yeah.
And it also addresses the assumption that if we somehow ever in the future created some sort of permit program. That it would that it would pay for itself for people who violate the permit, but we want to make sure that that if that assumption has any. Or liability or not, because we don't know that for sure. So.
Exactly. Good. I I have two questions and I'm gonna open it up for public comment, I believe, on this. Um, my first question, so going along with what Robert's asking, the two big buckets that I hear most about right now. Are, one, has to do with. Covid mask wearing enforcement and social distancing. Now, realistically, I I I can't really expect. You're the sheriff's office to be spending much time on Covid mask wearing and and enforcement of social distancing. When we've got like other types of emergencies out there, but I'm just trying to get this out into the public. So we can have some sort of discourse back and forth and I know how to respond to people when, you know, when we're asked. Why isn't law enforcement enforcing, you know, mask wearing and social distancing? And I I I don't know how to answer that question, Cora.
Sure. And thank you for the question. And it is important during these times and and we, as an office, do have. A very similar policy to the health order, which was, as we all remember, was extremely strict. Uh, within the five-mile rule and we found that taking that very balanced approach and gaining compliance. Via asking someone to either leave or, um, you know, just comply with the ordinance. So this mask mandate. We, again, are gonna take that balanced approach if we are called to a situation where people refuse to wear a mask. To say deputies are gonna proactively go out there and contact every individual, that's. As we all, hopefully, we can understand that that's gonna be very, very difficult to do because of staffing issues. We have also uh told our deputies, if you come across a situation in order to gain compliance and a mask to that individual. And have them wear it. Just ask for compliance and we usually gain compliance a hundred percent of the time. You know, I I remember when this first started, we did have one call that that I remember now is at Safeway. These young ladies from out of town came in, not wearing a mask. Some employees asked them, we responded and they left the store uh without an issue. Again, it is, I think, a lot of people do exercise their rights in different ways. So we would never want uh our staff to get in involved in a confrontation over a face mask ordinance.
Yeah.
Because of defiance. Sure. So, I mean, I know it's. It, we're taking that same balanced approach. We found great compliance in the health order and I think education was a real big part of that.
Okay, okay. Very good. And and then the other one back to, and that's good. Thank you for that. The other one back to Robert's question a little bit. Um, you know, we we myself, I guess, in particular, I'll speak for myself. I I hear from constituents constantly about people parking in areas that have, you know, red. Uh, paint on them and why aren't we giving more tickets? And then there's people parking in the streets on Highway One and why aren't we giving more tickets? And all these different things uh related to tickets uh for parking and I'm I'm just wondering. Uh, we've talked a little bit about possibly increasing the staff level on that and I think that's a separate subject at this point, but you know, you can answer that as part of it. Um, but also just kind of what, how how do I, what what should I be saying to these constituents, really, I guess, at the end of the day?
Well, I think it's a two or three-part question and two and three-part answer. So, so let's start with the highway. I know we we've discussed about near Surfers Beach, the highway, uh, people parking there. Well. That that's Caltrans property. That that is definitely something we've partnered up with Caltrans, as we all know here, when during the beach closures and Fourth of July and CHP. We normally do not enforce Highway One. Parking issues because, again, that is up to the Highway Patrol to enforce and Caltrans to actually post signage of no parking. Normally, they're pretty, um. Pretty forgiving and they allow people to park there as long as those vehicles are not blocking any part of the fog line. They're they're not over that fog line and interrupt interrupting traffic. Uh, we we probably will not take enforcement. Going on the red zones. I know there's been some emails back and forth with some residents in near Poplar. Some of those red zones are faded. Some people, uh, we've discovered, not only here in the city, but in the unincorporated area. They do paint their own red zones, um, to prevent people from parking in those areas. So anytime those type of issues come up, I I'm directly speaking with John Doughty or Maz about verifying if that red zone is active. Or it's a city red zone and then we will send people out there. Uh, the one thing is that, as we mentioned staffing, we have one community service officer for the entire city. His main responsibilities are that downtown business corridor, Poplar Beach. And several other areas along Kelly going to uh the state beach, right, from, you know, the the four hundred or three hundred to one hundred block. Uh, and there there's been a lot of issues there. So if people aren't calling us and complaining regarding certain zones or certain areas, we can't send a deputy or CSO there. Uh, because they actually have a set schedule. You know, going around around because there's, you know, the two-hour parking, there's twelve-hour parking. So, yeah, they do have a schedule. So, um, again, it it we are trying our best. Uh, I have talked to Bob about. Possibly bringing in extra folks and and as the council knows, I do almost every weekend bring in either extra deputies or extra uh. TSOs to do parking enforcement. We did a a great deal of citations during the the first initial closure of Covid. When a lot of that beach parking was closed and we really, uh, really did a lot. Throughout the entire coast, all the way up to Montero, and it really does impact because when we close down in Half Moon Bay, people are gonna spread out. And when we open up, people are gonna get attracted to come into town. And and the one last issue I want to mention that comes up consistently. Is when people park in the neighborhoods. If they're parking legally in front of a home, it's, they have the right away to, you know, they have the right to park there. It is a, is it, it is an inconvenience to to anybody who lives in that neighborhood, as long as they're not. Blocking that driveway or in front of a fire hydrant. If they are, I completely encourage people to call our non-emergency line. And report the location and we'll send somebody out.
Right.
So.
You know, very good answers, very good presentation. Thank you for all you do for the community. Um, it it is also, it's very nice to know that it's a very safe community. Crime is down. Uh, you know, it's 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 good on all aspects from from that perspective. So I just really want to appreciate uh what you do for us.
I appreciate that. Appreciate this.
Uh, uh, I'll open it up for public comment and then we can uh go on. Does anybody, is there any public comments on this topic?
Uh, we do have one so far. Michael, stop there. Go ahead.
Michael, you might be on mute temporarily. Let's just see.
Sir, thank you.
There we go. We got you.
Chief, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I, um. Learned quite a bit about the PERT program that I misinterpreted, uh, from other presentations that I've heard. Sheriff Bollanos describe it. I was under the impression that the PERT program could be instigated. On a call, on a nine-one-one call. And the Sandra Harmon homicide, uh, is the case that come the most current case. And the way you described it, it seems it's always an after-the-event. Team. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Well, well, no. I mean, I I can't speak to the Sandra Harmon case, but I I will tell you is that if the PERT team is available and. Normally, they are working a a day shift uh schedule.
Right.
Our deputies are asked to call them if time allows. Um, usually, a lot of these incidents, uh, time is not on our side. In order to deescalate certain situations.
Right, right.
Perspective, yeah.
In most cases, it won't be. And that that was just it. I was under the impression. Uh, that there was a PERT team available, so if somebody called for a family emergency or a. A mental health issue or in 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 the Harmon case where we have a a woman walking down the street with a shotgun and a bottle of wine. And she's warning people. Uh, I was surprised to find out that the the response to that was just some deputies looking for her. And then one deputy to go all by himself and and interact with her. And, uh, I was curious whether the PERT team was ever called. Or sent from the dispatcher to begin with, like, hey, let's find out what's going on with this woman. To cause her to walk down the middle of the street with a shotgun.
Sure. So, uh, again, I I don't have those details in regards to that specific uh case.
Right.
But I I will say, i- i- and if, if I can finish, I will say that every deputy has received. The crisis intervention training, um, to my knowledge. Uh, there may be s- some that have not, but we are definitely, our our mission is to have everyone trained. In this crisis intervention training, so they are well-equipped. Uh, at every level, uh, being a deputy in no matter what situation they're in. Either on the street or even within our correctional facilities to deescalate situations before they they, uh, you know. Go create a larger event or.
Right. And I don't, I don't mean to go on with this particular subject, but so is it basically that the PERT. Program is for and after the event and the person is alive and well and then your, uh. Things are gonna be provided to that family member?
No, not necessarily. As I said, if time is on our side, of course, we're gonna utilize all the resources available to us or the deputy who's handling that case. So the hope is always to deescalate and not engage people, um. You know, in 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 a negative fashion. I mean, we we are here to serve the community and actually. Provide resources and support, not only to that individual, but also to their families.
Right. No, I understand. And the meeting's gone along, but thank you for that. I I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, matter of fact.
All right, good back and forth. Thank you, guys. Um, all right, anybody, any other public comment? Doesn't look like.
Other hands raised.
Perfect. Thanks, Jessica. All right. Well, that being said, let me get back to the agenda. I'm not sure how we need to close out this yet. Hold on. Um, the law enforcement annual update. So we have heard the update. Uh, there's no staff report associated with this item. We're good to go. Excellent. So thank you, Saul. So let me get back in here. Uh, do we have any commission committee updates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, actually, Bob, I I can make a quick update on the Rec Commission meeting, um, that was held last week. Really quickly, two main items that were covered at that meeting. The commission had a, at their request, we scheduled a discussion on how. The commission and how our recreation services might, um, help support. Uh, individuals in the community, especially seniors, that might be experiencing isolation. Uh, during Covid times. It was a really great topic that came from the commissioners at a previous meeting. And we we believe this is a discussion we'll have over multiple meetings. Uh, in in this case, we had a speaker from Peninsula Family Services based out of San Mateo. Who runs, uh, several programs to help keep, uh, seniors connected. Uh, to programs and to others during this time. They have a hotline seniors can call. To get, uh, support, to get services, to have, uh, to sign up for, uh, a peer. Or someone in the community to call and talk to them. Um, we'll we'll hopefully be, uh, involving, uh, senior coast-siders and the Village of the Coast Side in future discussions. And our hope is that at some point, as uh recreation reopens, um, we can use this new information to, uh, create programs. In the long run, to support seniors, especially those that may be isolated and living on their own. Uh, the other, uh, important item was an update from the Boys and Girls Club of the Coast Side, uh, who is providing. Support services to many of our local students during, uh, the. Current process of doing remote learning and and for some families, for some students, technology gets in the way. Family situations get in the way. Uh, individual student needs, uh, require, uh. A different approach and the Boys and Girls Club is working with the school district and the city to provide. For some students, the ability to go into a space physically. Of course, all the protocols around Covid and social distancing are followed. And, uh, it 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 just gives some of these students with with ex- special needs. Uh, related, again, to technology or or family situations, the support they need. Uh, we're grateful to support it by allowing the use of our Ted Adcock Community Center and, of course, the school district is providing space for them as well. And it just continues to solidify our ongoing improving relationship with the Boys and Girls Club in this school district. And so we're grateful for the commission, um, providing a space for those discussions and, uh, some creative ideas for the future. So, uh, we continue to meet on the fourth Fri- uh, fourth Wednesday of each month and, uh. Invite anybody to attend. We're doing them on Zoom, uh, just like this, six o'clock, fourth Wednesday of each month. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you for those updates, Matthew. Appreciate it. Uh, are there any future discussion, possible agenda items?
Yes, I I have one and and I should have probably brought this up in my meeting with Bob this morning. Uh, but I forgot. Um, a very important member of our community, Judy Masias, passed. Recently, and it's a tragic loss for our community. She was responsible for. Starting Rota Care, our free medical clinic, and Sunrisus, our dental health clinic. So I'm wondering if we could do something in the way of a special commendation for her. And present it at the next council meeting or the one after that.
Very good. Thank you for that. Bob, do you wanna respond real quick or do it? Yeah, just.
Sure. And it's also, um, typical, um, other bodies also then adjourn the meeting. Um, um, for someone and that can be done as well or a moment of silence. So. We we will think about that and prepare something, um, for you to do at the next meeting, um, when you adjourn the meeting.
Thank.
And then, and then I know we're gonna talk about this in the future, but we've been asking for different possibilities of what we can do with the sheriffs. For possible other in, uh, you know, traffic enforcement during our busy weekends. Uh, and then, uh, you know, possible other parking enforcement and what we can do to really keep our city, um, safe. Uh, and so I look for, I know, I I know that that's gonna come up in the future and we're gonna talk about the different pieces. About how to keep things flowing, keep everybody safe, make sure that the roadways are open the way they need to, but, uh, I look forward to that topic as well. Uh, and with that, let's see, what's the next piece here? Then we move into any city council reports? All right, very good. And I'm gonna move to adjournment. It is nine fifty-five. Can we do a five-minute break and come back at ten? Uh, we are staying on this Zoom call, are we not?
Correct. We'll stay on this Zoom meeting. And yeah, we would need a couple of minutes for PCT to stop this recording and then start the new one as it's technically a separate meeting.
Can you find, is ten o'clock okay or do we need a slightly bit more time than that?
No, that's fine.
Ten o'clock. Five minutes. Here we go. See you all in five. Adjournment. And so we are here to discuss item one A with, I guess, uh, which is to con- con- consider the adoption of. Of a resolution for temporary beach and beach parking area closures to reduce the regional spread of Covid nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Uh, I'll make this report. Last Friday, the council had a special meeting, um, to consider whether or not to ratify an executive order to close the beaches. Uh, for this past weekend. Um, during that meeting, the council decided, um. To keep the beaches open last weekend and then also had a discussion. About what to do for this coming weekend Labor Day. The direction at the conclusion of that meeting. Was generally to keep the beaches open unless state parks definitively closed their beaches. The council was very clear. Um, that if state parks did that, that we. That if state parks did that, that we then should move ahead tonight and close the beaches. Since that time. The answer to that question from state parks was not definitive, I would say, one way or the other. So then we felt that since it wasn't crystal clear. That we should schedule this special meeting so the council could. Continue the conversation where they left off last Friday. On whether or not to close the beaches for this weekend. So I will just raise some relevant points. There's a staff report in front of you. That goes through the history and I won't go through all that now, going back to the beginning of the pandemic. And the success in closing for the Fourth of July. But I will get to the relevant point of why the council would consider closing the beaches for Labor Day in the first place. And that is the first bullet point on the bottom of page two. And the reason stated there is the closure of city beaches would be necessary to discourage travel to Half Moon Bay. To present unsafe crowding on the city streets and beaches, beaches and traffic congestion is likely to be higher on Labor Day weekend than in past weekends. And so the point is, is that we're in a pandemic, we're still in a pandemic, and you received a status. Of the of the pandemic from Ms. Blair earlier in the meeting. So that that's the salient point on why this is even before you today. So what has transpired, I would say, relevant points that have either transpired or we've. Have become known to us since the Friday meeting, I would say, are the following. One, it does look like we're expecting good weather, so fairly good weather on the coast, supposed to be hot inland. And so that typically is what, when that is the case, then people do come to the coast side. We do know also now that we didn't know on Friday that Pacifica has moved to close their beaches. They came out with an order earlier this evening. Due to the fire, well, we also know that there are beach closures in Santa Cruz County and Monterey County. But an interesting point there is that Highway One South remains closed. And will remain closed throughout the weekend. So there was concern that, oh, if Santa Cruz and Monterey beaches are closed. There will be an influx of people from those two counties up here. That still could be the case. But I think that's a relevant point for your consideration that Highway One will be closed through the weekend, so they would have to get here through a longer route. And then finally, the most relevant point where we left off on Friday was was state parks. And what they were willing to do as a partner agency, since their beaches are adjacent to city beaches and they work as a coordinated unit in this regard. So what state parks has said consistently since Friday. Is that they would be willing to close their parking lots, their parking lot, their day use parking lot at Francis. And their day use parking lots at Dunes and Venice. But they would not have the same resources that they had on the July Fourth weekend to enforce closing their beaches. So that has been a consistent message from them between Friday and now. And again, that's why we decided to put this item on the agenda. Because it wasn't definitive that they were willing to close the beaches. I mean. They're not willing to close their beaches, but they did say they would close their parking lots. And that just, I think, throws a little bit of a monkey wrench in the discussion because we know from experience. Memorial Day beaches were open, but parking lots were closed and that did not work well. July Fourth weekend did work well because it was a coordinated effort, beaches were closed and we were able to get the message out far and wide. So that's where we are before you. There is a resolution to close the beaches if that's what the council chooses. If the council chooses to leave them open this weekend based on the different facts and and situation as I just provided it. Then that option would be to just do nothing. And and we would then move ahead and prepare for having a regular weekend this Labor Day weekend. That concludes my report and we'll be happy to answer any questions and be a part of the dialogue.
So I'm going to open, open this up to the council just for clarifying questions. That's mostly regarding just to the report. Then we'll go to public comment and then we'll bring it back. Are there any clarifying questions anybody has? Okay, so let let me just understand real quick. If we shut down or if we elect to shut down, state parks is also going to shut down their parking lot. Which would, so nobody could park in there. So then we've got the problem that people could still park in the neighborhoods. We have enforcement for the beaches with a Polaris with Saul, I believe. Is that correct?
That's right. So I've been in conversations with Saul to have additional resources either way. So if we leave the beaches open, we would have additional resources because that's what he normally does on a busy summer day. And he's looking at getting a couple of extra deputies and an extra CSO. If the beaches are closed, then we need the extra resources to enforce the closure. So e- either way, Saul is working to get, you know, extra resources for the weekend, open or closed.
All right. And just total, my like layman not understanding this stuff. Is Saul able to patrol state beaches? Or is he able to, you know, drive the Polaris across the state beaches to reach back and forth to our beaches? Or how does that work?
So, so how it works is that when we do have the Polaris, we go through Francis Beach on that ramp. And we just hang a left and go south on onto Poplar Beach all the way down. Towards a ramp and then further south that that way. We do not enforce state beaches because state parks actually has their personnel and staff there. All the time. So we just work with them.
Got it, got it, got it. Good info. Okay. So just going along with what we've started out with, there is the possibility then. And I won't say this too out loud, but that realistically, there'd be enforcement on our beaches. And there might not be as much enforcement on state parks beaches possibly, depending on what staff really can show up from from that.
That, that's correct. We we could enforce ours, but again, I've had, I had probably four different conversations with a state park rep. Because I wanted to get their message on that, just crystal, crystal clear what he meant by that. And every time it was the same answer, they would, they would not close the beaches and they would not have the ability to enforce it if they did.
Okay, so they would close the parking lots, not the beaches, so people could access the state parks beaches. Regardless, a little dangerous. Okay, interesting. Good. Those are my clarifying questions for the time being. Very good.
I have one.
Please, please.
The state is going to close the parking lots no matter what we ask them to do or what we're going to do.
Okay, is that true?
No, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Penrose, they will only close the parking lots if we ask them to. They plan to leave their parking lots open unless they hear from us after tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Councilwoman Ruddock?
So. So they would be willing to close their parking lots at all of their beaches on the coast?
No, that's a great question. So in my last conversation with him, I should have mentioned that, my apologies. So as the evacuations have cleared and they moved the closure on Highway One. They have opened up their beaches all the way down to to Pescadero. So Bean Hollow's open, San Gregorio's open, Pomponio's open, Pescadero's open. Those are all open. They are closing Gray Whale Cove for the weekend and they're doing that separate from our decision making. They're doing that because they've been having challenges there.
So but would they be closing like the parking lots like at Venice and Dunes Roosevelt and?
Yes, our local ones, yeah.
Yes, Francis, Dunes, Roosevelt and Venice.
But only if, only if we ask them.
Only if we ask them to.
Right.
Okay.
If we say we're going to close our beaches, what does that mean? Is that like Poplar, Miramontes, Redondo and Surfers?
We have, our closures have been Poplar, Surfers and the little, the Miramontes, the little one near the Ritz. Our enforcement efforts, at least going back to the July Fourth weekend, that was a success, was only at Poplar. And and that would be what we would propose this weekend as well.
So you would close the parking lots, but only enforce at Poplar?
That, that, that would be what we would propose. That was what was successful on July Fourth. We did not have the ability. To really enforce surfers. I do believe, and I don't know, we'd have to ask Saul about this. Saul, the sheriff was able to do some enforcement at Surfers. We were not able to put, it just did not, was not effective to put city staff up there. It's just too porous of a beach, whereas Poplar, there's two main entrance points and we can control it a little bit better. But it's much more difficult to enforce and control surfers than it is Poplar.
If I can interject right now, as we all know, we we've demanded from our staff office wide on these fires. We've been going twenty-four seven for fourteen days. So the likelihood of getting additional staffing to be effective in this enforcement is going to be difficult. We are in the process as of today to try to fill those vacancies or the addition. That the city council is possibly considering or requesting. I've been in conversation with Bob since, I think it was Sunday, we started talking about this, if not before. So I I am trying my best to get staff to to. Fill these, these positions in order to conduct that enforcement. And again, we're going to use our city assigned deputies, but when it comes to the weekends, they're pretty busy responding to calls and. Mitigating traffic issues as well.
Very good. Now, any other further clarifying questions? I think that clarifies most of my questions at this point. Oh, last thing.
Would we have, would we have city staff parked at Railroad and Poplar, you know, like we did on July Fourth?
It would be our intention, yes. So if the council moves ahead with closure tonight. We would, we would, we would close in the same way we were proposing to close last weekend. So we were setting ourselves up to close last weekend by assigning staff in two locations at Poplar. We were not go, we were not going to put them at Railroad and Poplar and the end of Kelly. Our decision was to actually move them to the, to the, to the beach access points, the top of the stairs and the top of the slot. That the horses use. We thought that would be more effective, given that we were not. The plan was not to close the coastal trail this time. You might remember that for July Fourth, we closed the coastal trail and that was not our intention. So we would, we would work that out after tonight's action, if that's the action. But it, we were leaning towards it having to be probably three staff, two to three staff members on essentially all day Saturday, all day Sunday, all day Monday.
Would you close the gate at Poplar?
The parking gate, yeah.
Yeah. You know, the idea of closing the gate would be that it makes it easier for the staff to enforce. Because if people make it all the way to the parking lot, you start to get crowds there, they start to pay for parking. And it just feels like it's much harder for staff to enforce. If there's a no, if there's a beach closed sign at Railroad. You know, people should understand that we mean it. They can certainly park their car, walk all the way to the parking lot. And then they're going to run into a staff person who's going to say, did you read the sign? The beaches are closed and turn them around.
I think you would need to close the coastal trail too, especially if state parks is not closing their beaches. You're going to have people parking in the neighborhood and down to Kelly and then, you know, probably getting on the trail and coming down. I think you would have to close.
Yeah, I'll talk it over with Matthew and John Dowdy and and we'll strategize on the best way to do that, but that was effective for for July Fourth.
Unfortunately.
I would say this, though, you know, if the, if the air quality is bad, if there's smoke in the air. I would not want our staff standing outside all day in bad air, even if they had an N ninety-five mask. I I would not want, I would not want to expose our staff to unhealthy, smoky air. But I'd like to hear from the public. I think there must be some people wanting to address this.
Oh, no question. I have, I have one last clarifying question. So I believe that the state parks canceled all the reservations for camping for this upcoming weekend. Is that, has that been verified? Do we have, do we have a sense on that yet?
Yes, but I was going to get a secondary confirmation from, from the superintendent, Terry Kaiser. Because there seemed to be some mixed message on that. So I will send him a text right now, but. But yes, that's what I understand is that they did cancel the reservations at the campground.
Okay. Clarifying questions, good? Let's go to the public.
Thanks. First, we have Brian Holt. Brian, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. So glad to be able to go first tonight. So thank you, everybody, for all your work. And I just, I want to say thank you for city staff and everybody for all the work. To close down the beaches for last weekend or the weekend before, whenever it was, where we had evacuation and active. Active evacuation of fire circumstances that that required people to be. Concerned about accessing the coast. I do remain concerned about additional beach closures. And really the reality about being able to maintain additional beach closures. And just recognizing that we need to. Continue to provide access to our beaches because this is really an important part of the Coastal Act. And just a resource that serves our entire state. So I I'm concerned that we are moving forward with pushing forward closures that really cannot be sustained. As we continue to move through, through this COVID situation. So my question would be, why are we currently closing down these beaches? If it's due to fires and the active evacuations that that has passed. And if we're closing down to COVID, I'm concerned that, you know, people are going to come here anyways. And and we've been told by our public health officials that this is not necessarily, that this is beach access is a low risk. So we should continue to be able to maintain provide beach access. But we, we should be concerned about how we be able, we manage, how we provide bathroom access. Trash management and everything else. And so I'm just concerned that we're able to actually really enforce closure. What does beach closure really mean? It, this, I'm, I'm just, I have, I live in Arlita Park and I have people who. Park in our neighborhood here and and I just, I'm concerned that beach closure just pushes people into our neighborhoods. And I think we really should be able to provide the resources that are necessary to accommodate the visitors that come to our community. And we should be able to provide bathroom access and provide trash facilities, should be able to provide sustainable beach access. And and not exclude people and and because they're going to be coming here anyway. And we're going to be dealing with the problems anyway in a number of different situations. So. So with that, thank you all. I appreciate the efforts. And like I say, I think this is an important conversation. There's no right answers here. But but I'm really concerned about the reality of what is meant by beach closure.
Very good. Good, good, good points. Thank you, Brian.
And next we have Crystal and G.
Hello again. So from the perspective of the visitor center.
Please.
Whatever decision is made, please have it uniform between the county and the state. It causes pure pandemonium with people trying to figure out where they can go. And what they're allowed to do and what parking lots are open. I think Fourth of July worked really well because it was still so close to the shelter in place. I think we've reached a point now, I think last weekend or the weekend before, was a great example of people not really. Caring about what our situation is, if they want to come here and especially if it's going to be hot. So if we don't have a. So if we don't have a uniform blanket, the entire coast beach is closed, then we're just going to cause chaos. And as Sal mentioned, they're already stretched so thin that if they can't get the people, they can't get the officers out there to enforce it, then we're just going to pile on to the reputation that we've already gotten from the residents of putting out these orders and then it doesn't mean anything and people like, we've gotten that reputation of just giving in, I guess, um, because we can't enforce it. We don't have enough. So I, as a resident, would opt to not close the beaches. And it's unfortunate for the he- health perspective, and I totally get that, but I just think it's going to cause more chaos than we can handle. Um, and then from the business perspective, this is one of the few holidays that we kind of have left where they're going to be able to recoup any kind of money. So if people are going to come anyway, I don't know if we really want to make it much harder for them to come or more, you know, confusing and potentially take those sales away from the businesses. So there's a lot of factors at play. Of course, COVID just really screws things up as always. Um, but just some, some thoughts. And from the visitor center, we've already had to change our message machine and to try to like curtail some of the calls because people are just so confused. Thanks.
Very good, yeah. Yeah, it's confusing. Uh, very good.
Uh, next we have Paulette Eisen. Paulette, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is a very difficult, uh, another, another conundrum, a very difficult subject. Uh, with lots of different opinions and the previous callers, Brian and Crystal, you know, they both had excellent points. I did a straw poll on Nextdoor. Uh, I think I started it yesterday or today. I, I don't, I don't remember, but I've gotten, uh, 375 responses, which is actually, I think, more responses for any surveys we do. But, uh, I had 65% of people say, yes, close the beach. Oh, let me preface this by saying that I explained that Pacifica was closed and there are beaches in Monterey and, and, uh, Santa Cruz counties that are closed. And that the only thing we can close is our beaches, should we still go ahead and do that? That was the question, and it was a yes, no, or unsure. And, uh, 375 responses, I got 65% that said, yes, close the beaches. 27% said, uh, no, don't close, and 8% were unsure. So that's the response, uh, you know, it's input. It's not definitive, but it's input. And, um, you know, it's a really, it's a, it's a really tough one. Uh, the, I'd say the big question for me is to Saul, which is, given the fact that if we have massive crowds, we've got those enforcement issues to deal with. If we close our beaches and even though we still will get crowds, they will not be at the level as if we just have our open beaches. So which is more difficult, which is easier for you to deal with? Because I think that's a big factor in all of this. That, I think that's it for me at this point.
Very good. Sal, do, do you want to try to, i- is there any possibility of being able to answer that question at all, or is that, is that, uh, I mean, because that, that actually would be good input if, if, if possible.
So it's been our experience leaving the beach parking lots open. It relieves traffic, uh, throughout the coast side. When they are open, we get minimal calls for service to those beaches, to those parking lots. I understand what the council is trying to decide on. Again, this is only on the law enforcement side of what we experience when there's closures. Absolutely. There's not only more demand on uh, our office, but also on Public Works and city staff, as you know. Uh, 4th of July was a collective effort and a response by almost every employee from every department, and that's why it was a success. We involved the six or seven or eight different agencies on the coast side, Caltrans and CHP. I, I, I will reconvey that Caltrans is probably, um, tapped out in resources as well. They are staffing the hard closures because of the fire down south and multiple other areas that I'm aware of. CHP is in the same, uh, we have four hard closures that they're staffing down south. So again, can I make those phone calls? Absolutely. I'm going to try to make all those phone calls and see if we can coordinate, but it's uh, definitely, time is not on our side, uh, with this, and we will do our best to get those extra deputies uh, for this long weekend, uh, and the extra CSO. I don't have a, I don't see, unfortunately, a problem with the CSO. But again, they're going to be looking for violations when people are parking illegally.
And, and what's a CSO real quick?
A community service officer. That's what we have right now, one full-time for the city. So they're the ones that focus on parking enforcement. So if all these folks that come through these neighborhoods and are parked legally, but it congests, i- it's congesting all the surrounding neighborhoods, well, then we're going to have another issue of complaints of people aren't parking in the designated areas, and now they're creating a little bit more, uh, headaches for the residents that live along the beaches. So again, those are just kind of my thoughts on it. Again, i- it, it's not a, an opinion either yea or nay. But that's what we experience every weekend. We're used to these large crowds, as you all know, and, and, you know, it's in the thousands every weekend. And even during the middle of the week now, there's a lot of people coming through.
Yeah.
So we will try our best to, to fulfill, uh, some extra staffing for the weekend, for sure.
Very good. All right, let's continue with the public.
Uh, next we have Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead.
Hello again, City Council Chief. Uh, appreciate everybody sticking with us. Um, I think if I was an attorney, which I'm not, and we were conducting some sort of a a proceeding in front of a judge, I would move for a summary judgment at this point. I, I think it's obvious that, uh, we have to close down this weekend, uh, for the health and safety of the people. We hope that the sheriff can hang in there with us and just do their best. They've always done a great job. We don't want perfect to be the enemy of better. Um, if we can just save a few lives or save a few people from being infected with COVID, I think it's a successful effort. We saw it work well on 4th of July, and there's no reason to think it can't work well now, even if the authorities are predisposed, it fires zones. Let, let's just try our best and fall in line with Pacifica and other well-thought counties that are obviously erring on the side of caution and putting the health and safety of the citizens first and foremost, even before the, the, uh, businesses being open, which I don't think they do a heck of a lot of business on that particular weekend, but maybe they do. Uh, it seems like the kind of people that would avoid or that would ignore, um, the media rush to say, stay away, would, would not be the kind of people that we would want here to begin with if, if we do get the word out through the media and people ignore those warnings that this is a COVID zone and, and that they're being advised to stay away and they show up anyway. I, I, I don't believe in the pandemonium argument or the chaos or beach riots or, or any of that. I, I just don't see it. I think our sheriffs are more than able, even with minimal staffing, to control some folks that would ignore the direction to stay away. And I think the game is won before the actual event. I think by doing what we did on 4th of July, having a robust media effort is really the victory. The, the day of the event, yes, there's going to be stragglers and hey, maybe a, a sheriff's cruiser can cruise by the beaches and make an announcement over the loudspeaker, um, that there will be tickets issued, even if there's not. I, I think it's the warning and the posturing that really does the trick of, of saving, possibly saving some lives and preventing some, some virus infection. The, on the national level, we're hearing all the experts saying this is a make or break weekend for the country. And if we can just do our best on this particular weekend, it sends a larger message moving forward that we are thoughtful about this and paying attention. And, and we believe that there is a COVID crisis and we're not following prescriptions for herd immunity or any of the conversations that are now occurring from folks that maybe aren't taking this as seriously as they should. It's, it's easy to gamble with other people's lives. But, but I don't think we should be doing that. I think we should be following Pacifica. They're, uh, uh, in tune here. We, we are going to have good weather. Um, whether or not the, well, the fact that the state will close down its parking lots, I think that's good enough. Uh, if you get people out on the beaches, it's not the end of the world. The main thing is the travel, the people coming here, what the infection they cause on their way here, the infection to our frontline workers, and then, and then that infection being carried back into outside territories. It's not necessarily the interaction on the beach per se. It's all the surrounding activity that really is part of the crisis. So we just need to be mindful and err on the side of caution. The public does not believe that the authorities have this COVID crisis under control in any way. There's no sign that we have managed to get our heads around this issue yet. So to that extent, we really need to err on the side of caution and not be our normal cavalier selves, which works well in the real world in regular times. But, uh, my concern is there's some arrogance that is still carrying forward here, and, and we're not grasping that uh, we, we are outmatched currently by this virus. And that is the problem is we just don't have it together here. And to purport that we do.
Brent, 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 I'm going to just ask you, keep, keep going real quick and then just try to, try to cut it off, if you don't mind. But thank you.
I, I, I can cut it off there. Like I said, I, I think I moved for, for summary judgment, we're, uh, we're just looking to avoid preventable death and infection. And we know from the experts that we don't want centralized activities, and it worked well on 4th of July. Let's do it again and, 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 and try to do what's best for the health and safety of the population. Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Brett.
Okay, next we have Suzanne Swer. Suzanne?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Um, the council probably already understands that in principle I support keeping the beaches open as much as possible, because I think that there are much, um, health-preserving benefits to being able to be at the beach. Having said that, I wholly support, um, the city shutting down the beaches this weekend, given the fact that the beaches are being closed, um, to the north and the south of us, if there can be sufficient enforcement. I live adjacent to the beaches. I live adjacent to Roosevelt Beach. And what happens when you close the parking lot is they just come into our neighborhood. There's no trash receptacles. There's no bathrooms. And so the people are going to go to the beaches. They're just going to do it via the neighborhoods, and I don't think that's an acceptable answer. So, um, in the Nextdoor survey, there are quite a number of comments to that effect that, um, that people are concerned about the lack of enforcement pushing individuals into neighborhoods and exacerbating the problem. So as a resident of a, of a beachside neighborhood, I would certainly prefer the parking lots to be open rather than having a lot of congestion in, in the neighborhoods. And I think that, I think you have quite a bit of experience, knowing that in fact, in the Roosevelt and Washington streets, you do get quite significant traffic. It's not just the odd car. It's a lot of traffic coming into the neighborhoods. So if you can provide, um, support, then I, I wholeheartedly support what you're doing, but if given a choice, I'd rather the cars go to a parking lot and be able to use public restrooms rather than using the neighborhoods.
No, it's fair, yeah. Very good, 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 very good. Thank you.
Next we have Matthew DeTome. Matthew, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, and thank you, staff. And, you know, I, I tend to agree with the last caller. And I came into this meeting thinking that I support closure, but I think, uh, based on, uh, Saul's comments and the comments here from readers, uh, uh, I feel like my, 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 my question has changed and my answer has changed. You know, I, I think that if closure is more burdensome on our sheriff and, uh, sheriff's office, it's more burdensome on our staff. We saw the stabbing that happened in, uh, Princeton Harbor. There are people that are on edge out there, and I think putting our city staff and Dane, and, and sheriff's officers in danger on this weekend by people that are perhaps not mentally sound because of COVID, um, perhaps puts more burden on the community than the risk of an infection or two. Um, you know, I, I don't know which is the lesser evil. I know Mr. Mayor, you're going to get flat for whatever you decide, and City Council, you're all going to get flat for whatever you decide, and this is the burden of leadership and, you know, I support you and my, my vote is to keep the beaches open at this point. I didn't come into this meeting with, with that discussion, but thinking about the safety of our public staff and officers, I feel like that's what I've come to.
Very good. I like the, uh, I like the open mindset, Matt. It's good. Thank you.
Uh, next we have Space Odyssey.
Yes, um, I would like to highly recommend that all of the beaches and all of the parking lots be opened. I've noted that particularly today, that I think the air quality has improved out there. The fires are being contained. Um, it's forecasted to be a hot weekend. The business people along the entire coast and in the city of Half Moon Bay desperately need that extra business. It will be the last day of the summer. And the beaches belong to the people of the state of California, so they need to have access to the beaches. And I just would highly recommend that if people have comorbidities and they're afraid of the virus, well, I highly recommend that they stay home. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Excellent. I, I love it. Thank you. Thank you for, for joining us and sending, giving us your comments.
And next we have Kim. Kim, go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for, um, hearing all of our concerns. Um, so my, my concern for our neighborhood is the, um, if the state closes all their parking lots but keeps the beaches, the beach, the state beach open, all that traffic, as others have said, comes into the neighborhood. Once you close the state parking lots, that closes the bathrooms. And so now you have people coming into the neighborhoods and using our property, our streets, our storm drains, our bluff tops to relieve themselves. And this creates a very, very unhealthy situation. I go out and clean up trash twice a day, every day, and on weekends in which the beaches are open and the parking lots are closed, it's just a disaster for the neighborhoods and the communities that, um, that live here. And granted, it's not everybody, but it's just bad enough that it's just not a great situation to have especially the state beaches open and the state parking lots closed. I'm not sure how many parking spots that is that, that would be closed, but then all that traffic, um, then comes into the neighborhoods. And I, um, if, if the city beach is closed and the parking lot is closed, again, people will just come into the neighborhoods north of Poplar and south of Kelly. And, and they do. I think a couple of weeks ago, the beaches were closed, and it was a parade down, um, El Sasler or down, actually down Corais till 2:00 in the morning. We had people, you know, back and forth till 2:00 in the morning when the beaches were supposedly closed. So it, it's just, it's hard, I think, to manage that situation. So I just think, hope that you'll consider the stress that it puts on all the neighborhood communities when you close public, um, parking locations. So I just think, hope that you'll consider the stress that it puts on all the neighborhood communities when you close public um, parking locations.
And just just real quick before this caller goes, so are you talking about two weeks ago when the parking lots were open, but the beaches were closed? There was still a bunch of people parking in the neighborhoods even with all the parking lots open?
Yeah, I forget what the situation was, but um, again, it was a situation that probably wasn't um, um. I think that the officers had other things that they were dealing with fire and evacuation, which was definitely more important. I can't remember, but I also do remember recently, I do this on occasion with maps. I'll look to see how long it takes to get from our neighborhood to Main Street and Ninety-two. And it was a half an hour by car. I mean, I wasn't doing that mile, but it was a half an hour by car. If you were trying to get from our neighborhood to the intersection of Highway Ninety-two and Main Street. And that's, you know, that's a lot of stress um, on the community. Especially at, you know, four and five o'clock in the afternoon. But um, I just wanna say that it's really, really, really difficult on the neighborhoods once the beaches are open and the parking lots are closed. It just brings all that um, that um, you know, the bathrooms, the 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 neighborhoods now become bathrooms and trash receptacles.
Yeah, and I I I I'll let you go on that one. And thank you for your input. I think, I really just wanna say that I think we've learned our lesson on that one. Uh, pretty pretty well. I don't imagine that will ever happen again. Uh, nor nor has it uh, since since uh, since we did it initially. Um, but so we, you know, some of this, some of this, it's a whole, it's a bunch of emergency stuff. We're living and learning as we go through it. Um, and uh, lots of changes. Uh, I'm gonna bring it back to council now. Looks like we're done with public comment. And uh, let's let's talk about this. What do you guys wanna do? Uh, who wants to go first?
I will, if it's alright.
Please.
Um, I agree with Kim. I think that if uh, it's a disaster when parking lots are closed and beaches are open. And given what Bob has said about uh, the intractability of state parks uh, willing to close uh, state beaches, I think we should prevail upon them to keep their parking lots and bathrooms open. And and we should do the same.
Everything open, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, can I just go around Councilwoman Penrose?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Rarbach. Uh, it is unfair to put the pressure on uh, our neighborhoods close to the beach. Um, it's unfair to ask law enforcement to be monitoring that kind of activity. Um, I think we ought to leave the beach and the parking lot open.
Very good, very good. Uh, Councilwoman uh, Ruddock?
I think we first have to wrap our mind around the potential scale of visitation.
It's gonna be big.
This weekend. So if Monterey and Santa Cruz counties are closing their beaches. The San Jose, Santa Clara County people who ordinarily would drive over Seventeen are gonna drive over Ninety-two.
Yeah.
I guarantee on top of the the normal East Bay traffic. So you know, potentially that the scale of visitation is going to be, you know, fantastic. What I've noticed driving around the neighborhoods the last few weekends is um, even when the the parking lots and the beaches are open, there's still huge amounts of park neighborhood. Like I'll say, Slane, Potter Avenue, I'll slice the rain, even on Railroad. Sometimes I look up Spruce Street from Railroad and there's cars on both sides, like all the way up to Third Avenue. So I I think if we leave everything open, we're still probably going to see, you know, traffic impacts. However, probably not people defecating in the neighborhoods because they can access, you know, the porta potties and things. So as long as we, you know, understand that. Um, I'm of the opinion that the beaches are generally low risk for for COVID. I'm concerned about the scale of visitation. I'm concerned that it increases the density of visitation at uh, at our beaches, which make it harder to social distance and and all that stuff. So where ordinarily I might not consider uh,
I lost you for a second. It might have just been me.
No, she she's frozen. She might have to go out and come back in.
Yeah. Uh, Robert, do we, do you mind if we go to you and then go back to her?
Oh, I'm um, so I'm listening, you know, I really appreciate all the input from everybody. Um, closing parking lots, keeping beaches open, that's Memorial Day scenario. So that to me seems like the worst choice, because some people suggested that possibly. I really struggle with, you know, it's this, it feels to me like, you know, if we if we close Poplar. Then it throws everyone living on Kelly Street under the bus, right? Because the state beach will be open. And you know, it's very likely that the media will say, Half Moon Bay State Beach is open. I don't know, you know, someone was talking about, well, it's all about the communication and the media. Well, you know, people aren't stupid. They they know that state beaches are open, period. So to Debbie's point about density, overall, we're gonna have this huge density, but by closing Poplar, which is practically half our coastline of beaches. It at least, you know, spreads the density around um, by keeping it open. If we close it, all this incredible amount of traffic that I agree we're gonna get pushes all that density into just, you know, half the coast, right? Half half the beaches, which happen to be, you know, all the state beaches. So um, I mean, this is the definition of a paradox. Most choices aren't great. However, to really avoid that crazy density where people overwhelm neighborhoods do all sorts of strange things and leave all kinds of terrible things on people's lawns. Then I would think distributing, you know, the density across the whole coastline. You know, it it's the best of the two worst choices. So um, that's how I'm looking at it right now.
Excellent. So let let me just understand, uh, just so I can understand your perspective, Robert, you're in favor of?
Right, so based on the all the all those density issues, I would keep everything open to spread the density, you know, across all the beaches within our jurisdiction. Otherwise, closing anything just pushes twice the density to all the other areas that and 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 that's what creates those problems. Debbie, I was saying that's what creates those problems you referred to earlier where it's not just density, it is super density. And then people start doing all kinds of weird stuff because the bathrooms aren't open, uh, et cetera. So uh, it just seems to be the best of two bad choices. It's just, you know, everything open.
Very good, very good. I like, uh, Debbie, you're back?
Yeah, I somehow I got cut off, but uh, yeah, so I agree. I think we need to keep stuff open. Um, I'd like it if we could hand out masks, have somebody handing out masks if the smoke, smoky air isn't too bad. If we could throw up a couple more porta potties like on Kelly Avenue or something, I think that might be good. Um, but I but I just think it's like Robert said, keeping it open is really the the least, you know, bad decision.
Yeah, good, good. So for 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 myself, I have been all over the board on this topic. I've been talking to all the constituents I can possibly think of. I've been going back and forth. I've been called by a lot of mayors from different cities that are closing their beaches down and talking to me about what happened. Even when we shut down, uh, I've heard other things um, about what happened when we shut down Fourth of July. And what happened to other places that are closing down now. Um, because when we closed down Fourth of July, their beaches got completely overrun. And the community was like, we need action, start working on Labor Day immediately. And so they were like, well, so we started working on Labor Day and here we are. I am, I am scared. Just just to be, just to be clear, I am scared about the rush of people that we could have the scale, back to what Debbie said, of the people that we might have in Half Moon Bay over this weekend. Uh, and and it ma- it makes me nervous. I mean, somebody talked about traffic, parking, all the various things. You know, when we've shut down before, we've been able to do a media campaign uh, which generally will keep at least some people out. And you guys are right, people still, the people that don't listen to the media campaign and don't pay attention to the signs on Ninety-two and don't listen to the SMC alerts and all the different things and they come, they're gonna park in our neighborhoods anyways and go down to the beach. And unless we have enforcement, there's nothing we can do. Uh, so it's a, it's a scary situation because um, you know, and then you go back to what what are we here to do? We're stewards of the land. We are supposed to uh, steward to make sure that people can visit the beaches here in Half Moon Bay. And I agree with somebody else who said that the beaches currently, and and I've read, I've read a lot of articles on this, are one of the safer places to be for social distancing. Now, the argument that's made to me very often is, well, people go from the beaches into the into the into the shops and into Safeway and into this and into that, and that's where all the spreading happens. And that's probably, I would guess, true, but I don't think it's necessarily happening on the beaches themselves as much. Um, so so there's, so there's a lot to be said on kind of all these sides. I started off uh, this meeting, generally speaking, uh, thinking that with all the other jurisdictions shutting down, it made sense for us to follow suit, um, especially talking to different mayors and they're kind of like, hey, we wanna be united. We wanna be together in this. And I, you know, I didn't wanna break from that. Um, it's already a four oh vote based on what you guys are saying. I see a lot of, I see a lot of positive in keeping the beaches open as well. Uh, so I, you know, I'm happy to go that that way. I just, I just want the city to be prepared for the fallout of what it may look like um, from a absolute madhouse of people perspective. Uh, based on the scenario. And I mean, as long as we're prepared for that and we have extra enforcement with Saul. Uh, and we we can deal with the traffic situation the best we can. Uh, in terms of maybe even having Saul help from a traffic perspective, maybe have officers out in the streets. Uh, I do think it's the lesser of the worst decisions that we can make uh, in in terms of what we can do. And I do like, from a crystalline perspective and a business perspective, like it's a big weekend. And I know people are coming, uh, and there's reservations at hotels that would have to be canceled. And all these things would change if we made this decision. And uh, you know, we want the businesses to survive. We wanna support our local businesses as much as possible. This is a, this is a weekend where business will come. So uh, I'm in support. Uh, and uh, you know, I I think each one of us, and we can go back through, uh, Robert, as soon as I'm done. Uh, each one of us has probably been on both, I I hope at least, both sides of this argument uh, throughout the entire time. Is all these different circumstances keep changing all the time. Uh, because just uh, a week ago, I was saying, let's keep, you know, I just sat at a council meeting and said, let's open it in the ideal over over this weekend. And then when everybody else closed, I was kind of like, uh-oh. Now we need to really look at this as a different perspective. So I'm glad we got to talk about it here. I'm glad we got to hear from the public. And um, and you know, again, we're gonna live and learn, uh, because all of this is uh, is a living and learning experience as we go through it. So I'm happy to support. Yeah.
One issue that it's important, I think, to keep in mind is, you know, there's what, ninety-seven spaces at Poplar. So what I've seen is, so people fill up Poplar and they like wait for people to leave.
Oh, it'll be filled by nine AM.
And 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 there's a problem with emergency vehicle access. If people are allowed to just idle on Poplar between Railroad and the beach, waiting for somebody to leave.
Yeah.
So uh, you know, I don't know if there's a way to meter that or have, you know, make sure there's a clear path around the parking lot so people can drive out. But I don't think we want people blocking emergency access by, you know, loading up the lane on Poplar waiting for parking.
Yeah, and and back to it, that would have to be a police officer. That can't be somebody like a a staff member of city staff. And I'm I'm happy not to have city staff out there and I'm happy to not have our police really out there. Somebody else mentioned this, the safety and all the weird energy out there right now with people and uh, as much as possible. So uh, I agree with what you're saying and that parking lot will one hundred percent be filled by nine AM and people are gonna start parking in the neighborhoods like crazy.
Inundated no matter what, right?
Inundated, inundated.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor. So.
Go ahead, tell.
Sorry, I just, just in regards to your concern about people parking on Poplar, there is no parking signs up and down that area. Uh, so we will send people to do passing checks. And to the point, i- it's our obligation in our job to uh, face whatever circumstance is out there. So we're not uh, in fear of any type of interaction that we have with the public because w- we have to do that. So we're willing and able to uh, serve the community no matter what the circumstance is. So we will do passing checks and uh, we will take enforcement action on the no parking uh, aspect of it on Poplar. And again, I encourage those folks who live in that area, call that non-emergency line we have, uh, three six three four nine one one. And report that there is uh, parking uh, issues in on the Poplar between Railroad and the parking lot and we'll definitely respond.
The other thing that I think would be helpful is if we have something that could be given to people to say, all these other beaches up the coast are open. You know, this one's full, but you can go to Venice or, you know, whatever. We need to find a way to spread out.
Well, down the coast too, down the coast too, Debbie, those beaches are gonna be open.
Yeah, so we need to, we need somehow to get the message to people when they're in town, you know, you maybe it's the digital sign, I don't know, but there's gotta be some way to tell people, you know, there's a dozen beaches on the San Mateo Coast side that are open.
Right. I just wanna, oh yeah, I'm sorry, Debbie, you finished?
No, no, go for it.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
Oh, okay. You know, I really wanna just emphasize, because a couple of people, you know, kept saying, hey, you know, this worked on July Fourth. Well, what worked on July Fourth wasn't a a a, you know, a an incredible media message. What worked was that everything was closed. Everything was cooperated, all the, because people came, remember that first day? Friday, you know, and they checked it out. They said, we're not gonna believe it till we see it. And they saw enforcement, they saw the dune buggies going up and down, both the state had their buggies, we had ours. They saw enforcement and there was nobody by that afternoon on any of the beaches. So that's why that worked, because the state cooperated. I would also like to say, I am extremely frustrated with state parks, that they wouldn't close their beach. Um, they were okay to close them down in Santa Cruz. Um, they weren't okay to close our beaches. I still can't understand how, if they have enough staff to keep it open. They don't have enough staff to keep it closed, it's beyond me. I don't get that. But um, but I'm really frustrated, you know, I mean, that's what we decided last week. If the state would help us out, close the beaches, we would do the same. And um, yeah, so um, it's gonna be a uh, unfortunate issue that we could, they couldn't get behind us, but being that's the case. Um, I think that doesn't leave us much choice, like we talked about last week. Uh, I I have a question real quick, you know, just in terms of communication and we can get further into this topic, but uh, you know, just in terms of co- yeah, community e-news or how to get, you know, I would just, I thought we did a very good job. Uh, and still people asked me millions of questions, but when we closed down the beaches over the evacuation But when we closed down the beaches over the evacuation time period, I thought we did a very proactive job communicating, hey, here's what the story is, here's how the enforcement's going to work and it's going to kind of not really be there. Here's the fact that the, the parking lots are still open. Here's the rationale for it. I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if we can, you know, as we communicate this out, get that same message, obviously different because it would, these are different circumstances, but get that same message out as to why we're doing what we're doing, what beaches are still open and, you know, and just kind of like, uh, so people at least are somewhat aware of what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. And I see Colleen is, is doing her normal, uh, she's reaching out to folks right now to get our e-news prepared for this week. Uh, and I think Jessica is there listening as well. So we'll make sure we get that out and, and we send the right message.
Yeah, cool.
It would not promote it to the wider world.
What, right. The message is not...
Our beaches are open, come on down.
Well, I'm, I'm still hoping, I'm hoping that everybody else closing their beaches, that that message has gotten out because I've seen a lot of articles on it. And I'm hoping that people just assume that our beaches are closed and maybe we get half the amount of absolute people coming here than I think we're going to get, um, just based on that. Hope, hopefully some of that will lessen the, 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 the amount of people coming. But I, I think there'll be plenty of people. So I mean, I'm not saying that we'll not have people, but, um, hopefully that'll help a little bit. Uh, any other comments? Are, are we good on this?
I just want to emphasize that we really want Bob to make sure that state parks, uh, keeps their parking lots open.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will take that crystal, crystal clear, um, tomorrow.
And, and just so you know, this is, this is a, a, a last teeth on this, but we are working towards a more synthesized, uh, way to make all this happen in the future. Right, right now, we've never really dealt with all this stuff before and there's been various emergencies and I wish we had a more synthesized way of communicating with state parks and Peninsula Open Space Trust and Granada Sanitary District and CLT and the Harbor District and the San Mateo County and all the other jurisdictions we have to deal with. And, and we're, we're, you know, we're learning all these different factors of what needs to happen to close things down the way that it needs to be done. And we are going to work towards a process that is not like this, where every week we're discussing different things of what we're going to shut down, who's going to do what and how it's going to work and all the different factors. So I just want the public to be aware at least that, uh, we will have a more synthesized plan moving forward. Um, but right now, we're still in the emergency section of this where we are adjusting to various factors. Uh, and that's it. I appreciate your time and energy. I think you've got your direction. Is there anything else you need from us?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, we're clear.
Okay. Anything else any council members want to say on the subject? All right, very good. Just checking. Uh, then I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending. Great discussion and, uh...
Thanks, everyone.
Be healthy.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.